Good evening, welcome to the Village Board meeting for the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, October 28th. If you are watching live on Monday, October 28th, we encourage you to call in if you have comments or questions. Our calling number is 769-1677. As always, you can catch us both live and on-demand webcasts. The live broadcast is via Verizon or Cablevision Cable TV. You can watch a live webcast or an on-demand webcast at PCTV76.org. Our next regular meeting is a week from today, Monday, November 4th, at 8:00 PM with a joint work session with the Pleasantville School Board at 7:00 PM. So that is our annual joint meeting with the Pleasantville Board of Education. That's next Monday at 7:00 PM here at Village Hall. We alternate back and forth. This year, it's at Village Hall. So anybody who has an interest in those subjects is encouraged to visit, come, or watch on TV or the web. Tonight, the primary purpose of our agenda is to have a presentation by Benchmark on the zoning change for a proposed senior assisted living facility. And I know that there are a number of comments and presentations from community members, which we intend to do thereafter. Just had a couple of announcements for starters. The first was, we had an enormously successful Ragamuffin Parade on Saturday. I just want to thank our rec. department, our parks department, and our police department for pulling off what is really one of the great days of the year. All of Bedford Road filled with ghosts and goblins, and they gathered down at Memorial Plaza and finished off with some festivities down there while the farm market was still in full swing. So it was a big day on Saturday, thanks to all of those people. Anybody else have announcements they want to make?
The Tina Campino race was great.
Oh, right, yes.
It was a very successful event. A lot of participants came in second in my age group. Thank you very much.
And first in your age group for Pleasantville.
I would have been Jonathan if he would have run this year. He didn't shout.
Anytime you're chasing me, I run faster.
So, because we have presentations involving AV from Benchmark and have also received a raft of submissions from them, all of which are up on the website at Pleasantville-NY.gov, including, among other things, their economic analysis, their geotechnical stuff, a series of materials having to do with the economics of the project and the economics of senior assisted living in these environs. So anybody who's interested in the subject can take a look at all those materials up at Pleasantville-NY.gov. So they'll be making a presentation tonight that involves AV with their setup. I'm going to suggest, indeed request, that anybody who have comments, questions about any of that, hold their comments. Last time, we bounced around a little bit, which is helpful for all of us within the room, but not helpful at all for people listening at home. So I'm going to suggest that Benchmark do their presentation. Afterwards, we'll be happy to entertain anybody who would like to come up to the podium and ask a question relevant to that. And I also understand there are some people who would like to make a presentation of their own on this subject. So if anybody has anything they wanted to bring up in the category of public comment unrelated to Benchmark, now would be the time to do it. If you have a comment about Benchmark or questions about what you're soon to see, we'll do that after Benchmark. Any takers on other subjects? Okay, great. So as mentioned, Benchmark provided an awful lot of materials that are now up on the website, filling in a lot of the blanks they had promised to fill in. David Steinmetz, all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the Board of Trustees, David Steinmetz from the law firm of Zarin &amp; Steinmetz, representing Benchmark Senior Living.
Oh, David, I'm sorry, I apologize for stopping you. I forgot to mention that Patty Dwyer, our village administrator, is on vacation and therefore not here. We do have Joel Sacks, our village attorney, representing the village in this matter. Judy Weintraub, as always, our village clerk, and Jeff Econom, our superintendent of Public Works here as well. Susan Favate, our consultant planner on this subject from BFJ Planning, is also not here, but has reviewed the materials and will be reviewing the tape of the meeting. So, sorry about that.
No problem.
Off and running.
So I'm actually going to try to be fairly brief because we did attempt to address the meaningful and substantive questions that we got from the board and from the public in writing. As the mayor indicated, we did make a rather extensive submission on October 23rd, 2013, with a cover letter and a number of reports. I'm just going to highlight a few things that I think are appropriate and summarize. We attempted to respond to some of the specific issues that we got. John Meyer Consulting, I'm pleased to say, has responded to the geotechnical information and questions, and there was a geotechnical report submitted. There were some traffic questions that were raised by BFJ, your outside professional consultants, and JMC responded to that. We submitted a revised stormwater pollution prevention plan and addressed some drainage concerns. And as your board knows, we received, you received, a letter from Foxwoods Condominium with some substantive comments, as well as with some proposed zoning recommendations or changes, suggested changes to our draft zoning text. Taking a giant step back, as the board knows, we have proposed a zoning text amendment. We did that after a fair amount of study, of discussion, both internally and with your professionals. In fact, the question came up at the last meeting about spot zoning, and I said to the board, one of the first questions that I got substantively from you and from Mr. Sacks was, does this constitute spot zoning? Is this a legal issue that we need to address? I raised the fact that we had submitted to the village a memorandum, a legal memorandum addressing this point. It was brought to our attention that that might not have been officially filed as part of your administrative record. So we did submit that memorandum along with this most recent submission. So you now have our January, I believe it's January 14th legal memorandum regarding our compliance with the law.
And that too is up on the web.
And the reason I mention that is I know that Foxwoods raised the question about whether or not this should be viewed by your board as a special permit rather than a floating zone. And we attempted to address our response to that in our submission letter last week. We believe that by recommending that the board do this as a floating zone, it actually gives you more protection than you would receive where there's simply a special permit. A special permit under New York state law is deemed to be, quote, "tantamount to an as-of-right use." The floating zone, however, were you to adopt it, would require on a case-by-case basis an analysis by your board to determine that the utilization of the EC, elder care zone, would be appropriate on a case-by-case basis. You'd have to go through the secret process, you'd have to legislatively layer it onto a piece of property, and then it would ultimately go before your planning commission. So as far as the Foxwoods submission, we want to acknowledge they made it. I know that they've paid very close attention to this. From a substantive and legal matter, we believe that the comments that they made are not necessarily appropriate. I think what you've got in front of you is legally defensible and substantively more of a thorough enactment. So we kind of stand by what we filed originally. Fiscal. You did ask us at the last meeting to go into the fiscal analysis. We did submit a rather comprehensive fiscal analysis that was done for Benchmark by the UMass Donahue Institute on Economic and Public Policy Research. You've received that report. I just want to touch on some highlights. This report actually tells the village, based upon a comprehensive study, that after the full build-out of this site and full tax valuation, after what we would consider full occupancy, it's projected that the annual real property taxes would be about $415,000. That's across the board, county, village, et cetera, school district. And there's also an acknowledgement that the village would be paid approximately $200,000 in connection with building permit fees. There are a host of other categories in the fiscal impact. We believe, in summary, the fiscal impact of putting an assisted living facility on this property is unquestionably fiscally beneficial to the village. Right now, the site actually generates no revenue as a result of the church. Were it to be developed in accordance with current zoning for single-family residential homes, it would not yield the fiscal benefit that the Donahue Institute has calculated. And that's because my client is preparing to make an investment in the community, an investment on this property in excess of $30 million, something like a $35 million investment. And you all have asked us to respond to some questions you got from the neighbors. And the neighbors asked a legitimate and an important question. What's the fiscal or economic impact to neighboring homes in terms of property values? And some of you, one or two of you actually said to us, said to me, David, go back to Benchmark. They have to have some kind of canned economic study. This must have been done by them previously. The good news is I have some answers for you. The bad news is that they don't have a prepackaged economic analysis that they've done and utilized it elsewhere. They've actually never, I spoke to several of the principals at Benchmark, there is no situation where they've been asked to demonstrate to a municipality why there would be, A, a fiscal benefit, or here in this specific question, an impact on neighboring properties. They've never had to do the exercise that we've been asked to do. So I kind of tasked them with giving me something. I refused to come back before your board and say, sorry, I got no information, other than we think it's really okay. So what we actually found, I'm going to start with an industry report, and then I'm going to get a little bit more specific. There's a lot of data out there on property value impact to neighboring homes as a result of multifamily and affordable housing. That gets studied a lot. A number of commentators have been asked to comment, what happens if a multifamily rental or fee simple type of development comes in next to single-family homes? What happens to the folks in the single-family homes? And I start with that because there's a direct parallel between that and our situation. Interestingly enough, the Industry Association, the National Association of Home Builders, has done that analysis, and in an April 29th, 2011 report, they say the following. Many single-family homeowners assume that nearby multifamily housing has a negative impact on their property values. American Housing Survey data recently released from HUD, Federal Agency Housing, Urban and Development, and the Census Bureau shows that if single-family homeowners purchase homes within a half-block of established multifamily housing, the homes appreciated faster over 10 years than homes without multifamily neighbors. They actually appreciate faster, according to the National Association of Home Builders. So playing my own devil's advocate, my first comment is, but that's the National Association of Home Builders. That's the trade association for builders. Of course, they're going to say something that's beneficial. It wasn't good enough, I was looking to see if we could find something better. I found that MIT, Massachusetts Institute of Technology, MIT Center for Real Estate, did a housing affordability analysis in 2005 called, quote, "The Effects of Mixed-Income Multifamily Residential Housing Developments on Single Family Housing Values." Effective, mixed income multis on singles. So it's like a 100-page analysis from MIT, and I learned a bunch of things about Massachusetts because that was where the study was done. Massachusetts has something called 40B housing, Section 40B housing. Massachusetts has a more powerful affordable housing mechanism than we seem to have here in New York, let alone Westchester. There's actually a provision that if you don't have enough affordable housing in your community, you get the stick of a 40B. And a 40B is essentially multifamily housing where there's a component of 25% or more of an affordable housing component. So it's multifamily with at least a quarter of affordable units. Now, needless to say, communities flipped out. They got very nervous at the notion of 40B housing coming into their neighborhoods, what would happen to our single-family housing values? So a study was commissioned by MIT for this. I'm going to be very brief because MIT took 100 pages to analyze the data. They studied housing prices and fluctuations over a 10- to 15-year period, taking into account economic cycles and other impacts to isolate whether or not this kind of multifamily, mixed-income housing had a negative impact. Quote, "The results," and I said there were seven communities, quote, "The results in all seven case-study towns lead us to conclude that the introduction of large-scale, high-density mixed-income rental developments in single-family neighborhoods does not affect the value of surrounding homes. The fear of potential asset value loss among suburban homeowners is misplaced." That's distilling it to its essence. They go through an awful lot of data to ultimately conclude in this report that there is no negative impact. Now, I don't have, I wish I could hand you right now the MIT study done for senior housing. I don't have it. But our generalization and Benchmark's principles asked me to communicate, this is not mixed-income housing, this is not high-density housing, this is simply basic multifamily apartments for senior citizens. Yes, there are services provided. The services that are provided end up generating less overall traffic impact for a community than we would if there were 100 units of residential housing, and the traffic data shows that. The 100 units of senior assisted living residential units also have a positive fiscal benefit to the community as opposed to a number of schoolchildren that would be coming in. So our conclusion, and we absolutely assume that BFJ will be opining on this, our conclusion is that the housing values to the neighboring community on Maple Hill, Foxwoods, up and down Bedford Road will not be negative. In fact, according to the studies that have been done, it will either be neutral, or actually it looks like they will increase at a greater rate. So what we're really here to do tonight is to just replay the video with some modifications that have been made to identify some other issues that we talked about at the last meeting, and that's the surrounding area. You'll recall that, other than the expletive that I slipped when I took out my iPhone, we really wanted to show you the surrounding area so that we could put it into context because we got a number of questions about the surrounding area and the character of the community. We genuinely believe that the design that has been generated here by, really, a regionally, if not a nationally renowned architectural firm in conjunction with John Meyer Consulting, has generated a wonderful product, a product that fits on this site, and we want to take you around it once again. We're going to be brief, but one of the things that we wanted to do was to show you our site and our site in context with the surrounding area. We're happy to answer any questions, but I will tell you, it's our position at this point that Benchmark and its consultants have supplied the village and your technical consultants with a tremendous amount of data, empirical data, and we believe we're now kind of at a crossroads, we're reaching the crossroads in the environmental review process. If there are holes in the record, or if there are other areas of inquiry that you still think we need to answer for you, we need to know that. I can tell you that our team genuinely believes we've given you the engineering information, we've given you the traffic information, we've now given you economic and fiscal information, and we're very pleased that we also have a meaningful and a reliable aesthetic and visual presentation. So I'm going to turn this over to Anthony Guccione and his team to present to you our visual and our video. I understand the neighbors have something that they're going to display, and we're anxious to see that, and I'm sure we may have some comments about that. So I'm going to turn this over to Anthony.
Mr. Mayor, before Mr. Guccione starts, I just want to go back to something that Mr. Steinmetz said at the beginning about the difference between a special permit use and a floating zone. When there's a special permit use under the law, if the applicant meets all the requirements for a special permit, then the board is required to grant the special permit. There's no discretion. On the other hand, where there's a floating zone, it requires a legislative determination of the Board of Trustees to determine that this particular site should or should not be utilized as an assisted living facility. And the courts in New York State have said that a legislative determination, the legislative body has much greater discretion. And there's really, as I said, there's no discretion if there's a special permit use. So that's why I think that the applicant had suggested, after discussing it with myself and with Buckhurst Fish, that a floating zone would be a more appropriate mechanism for establishing assisted living within the village.
Okay, thank you for that, Joel. And it reminds me also to point out that among the submissions that we got this week from Benchmark, and which are also on the web, is a map that shows their analysis of the other parcels in the village where this floating zone could be applied. The piece of that, obviously, that it doesn't engage is the possibility of somebody assembling a series of parcels that are not in common ownership, but it's a useful map and one that responds to a question somebody asked, so I refer you back to that on the web.
Good evening. My name's Anthony Guccione with John Meyer Consulting here on behalf of Benchmark, and I'd just like to go over a couple of points before we get to the video presentation. As Mr. Steinmetz had said, we did submit a revised preliminary stormwater pollution prevention plan, dated 10/21/2013, and Appendix I of that report includes a geotechnical investigation that was prepared by GTA. The report summarizes the results of eight test pits and 19 borings, which they performed recently, in addition to the 25 test pits that they did previously. The report, one of the questions that came up was rock removal in a previous meeting, and the report does recommend blasting for some rock removal in certain areas. That blasting would be done by a licensed blasting contractor. In this case, blasting is preferred because it can really shorten the duration of the rock removal process, and it's much less impactful than hammering and chipping would be in terms of noise and duration. So that would be employed.
Just on that subject, a number of people have asked me whether the retaining wall that you'd be cutting through to create the proposed driveway would need to be reinforced in various ways.
The existing retaining wall.
Yeah.
Well, the majority, as you know, of the existing retaining wall would remain in place. A small section would be eliminated to cut the driveway in. We haven't really had a structural engineer take a look at that. The geotechnical report preliminarily says it's generally in decent shape, but it should be checked for structural integrity and just fortified as necessary.
He actually called it fragile.
Fragile?
I think, wasn't there a word like that about that wall?
What I read, it said it should be checked by a structural engineer and fortified as necessary, but I didn't see.
So at any rate, I mean, obviously, if this were to proceed, would be on Benchmark's dime to
Make sure the wall stays.
Make sure that that wall is stable and safe.
That's correct.
Does the blasting work come anywhere near the wall?
The blasting is actually no, back towards the rear of the site.
Okay.
The front of the, actual front of the site would be some filling where the new retaining wall is going.
Right, because you're stepping them up.
Correct, and as you go further back, the cuts get deeper.
Okay.
Where we put the new retaining wall. Yeah, the wall would have to remain, anything had to be do. We're purposely staying back from that wall with our new retaining wall to leave a natural buffer and leave some of that existing earth in place behind the wall. So whatever needs to be done to make sure that wall is sound will be undertaken by Benchmark.
Have you, I'm not clear, did you guys get actual approval from DOT to make that curb cut onto 117, or do you, did you get positive body length? How would you characterize that and where does that stand?
Yeah, we met with them, had some meetings, and they supported the idea of connecting into Bedford Road. We did not get any highway work permits or any actual permits at this point, but they advised that they're on board with that concept.
And usually when they say that, that's the high percentage of times that that happens?
Yes.
Okay.
One other point with the reviewing the geotechnical report, made one minor modification to the stormwater system. The north system stayed exactly as it was proposed. The south system, due to the location of some of the subsurface materials and rock, we just slid it a little to the south, and we're able to reduce that system from 43 units to 35 units because it was found that the permeability rates of that soil were quite a bit higher than anticipated. Other than that, the system has stayed the same. And from that, if it pleases the board, we'd like to move on to the video simulation. It's a brief simulation, it's about four minutes. It's two parts. The first part kind of just superimposes the Benchmark building over the existing conditions in a Google Earth format, and it doesn't show the parking lots and all the other improvements of the site. It just shows the building, and the idea with this is to kind of compare the massing of our proposed building to other buildings in the area. It also illustrates that this is a transitional-type site, looking at the commercial buildings to the west, you've got Savant Engineering, the Bank of New York Building, the Bennison Buildings on the other side. As you come towards the east, you have the Foxwoods multifamily, and as you cut across Bedford Road, you get to the single-family residential houses. So that is a transitional, and I think you'll see that when you see us scroll through this video. The second part of the video is about two minutes, and it's a portion of the video that we showed previously. It just kind of shows a flyby of the site going around the perimeter of the site and sees, reminds you of what it's like looking into the site.
Okay.
Okay, so we're just beginning with an aerial view, zooming into the location of the site. And here you can see the Benchmark building in the rear, some of the, a couple of the Foxwoods. Foxwoods has many buildings, but these are two of them associated. You can start to see that the massing and the configuration of these buildings is very similar to the Benchmark building, and that is what I was talking about, some of those, that multifamily to the west. As you go further to the west, you see the Bank of New York Building is quite large here, similar in scale, and beyond that are the Savant and the Bennison Buildings further to the east. Again, Bedford Road, Maple Hill, the church is right there, going off the site. A little different perspective of the proposed building over the existing conditions, but we did put in the proposed wall and shows the existing wall along Bedford Road there. You can see the tennis courts for Foxwood in this location. And then here's the single-family residential neighborhood to the east. Again, Summit, Maple Hill Road, and the existing church in this location. And still, looking from this perspective, you can see similar in scale to the couple of buildings in Foxwood that we actually popped up. I think there's about 15 or 20 buildings on that side in there. You can see the topo of the residential community going up. The walls, the new driveway will go in here. Again, we're showing existing conditions, the church, Bedford Road, and the proposed Benchmark building. It's actually kind of really are similar in configuration and size to the Foxwoods building. We were surprised when we saw the aerial, how similar that those buildings were in And here we are, back to the original simulation, coming down Bedford Road, the existing church you can see on the right in this location, the new driveway that'll be cut, where the wall will be cut as the mayor had indicated, the new driveway coming in, the existing wall on the right side of the video, and we're heading northbound on Bedford Road right now. And you can begin to see the top of the proposed Benchmark building. This is the existing retaining wall. Above this is another retaining wall back towards the building, which you hardly see because of the height of the existing wall, existing vegetation, and you do see the peak of the Benchmark building as you're heading north. And Foxwoods is on the left with their wall, and now you're coming to the end of the site, the north end of the site, the existing house that was missing on the original video with the property line here in this location, north property line. Now you're looking southbound into the site from the residential neighborhood to the north. You can see the existing and the proposed trees that'll screen the site, retaining walls, the fence that'll provide additional screening on top of the tiers of walls. And again, this shows the trees that were actually on the survey. Beyond our property, none of the trees are shown in this location. And now you're looking eastbound towards the Benchmark site from the rear of these properties. See the Benchmark building behind, and the existing and proposed landscape screening. Again, the property line to the west, and this is the proposed subdivision line that'll go between the church and the Benchmark building, Benchmark building in the background, and then here's the church. And the conditions here are existing conditions, and that's what it'll remain. There's no real changes being proposed in this area. And we wrap around the south side of the church. The church parking lot is behind the trees, the existing church parking lot that'll remain. The existing church parking lot, that'll remain its existing configuration. Coming down Maple Hill with the church parking lot and the church in the rear. The existing driveway to the church off of Maple Hill. And then we come back around to Bedford Road. And we'd be happy to answer any questions.
So for starters, can I ask that you give us those two videos so that we can post them?
Absolutely.
Because I think that would be a benefit. You can work that out with, Shane is actually the guy who can tell you exactly what he needs in terms of the format. So I think that would be a big help for people to be able to take a look at that at will. The, the superimposition on Google Earth shows the existing vegetation.
That's correct.
Obviously, a number of the trees that are shown around the building will come down as you develop the parking lots and the like, so it's not nestled into that little green pocket quite to the degree it shows in that video, but it certainly gives a sense. A number of the neighbors have commented about the different conditions that will exist in the winter when the leaves are off the trees. And that was an issue that had been raised. Have you got the capacity to give us some sense of what you think those views down the hill look like in a winter condition?
They did.
Yeah, we did come with a board.
Right, you're right.
It had the winter views and it had the video views.
You're absolutely right, I apologize.
And just if I may, Mr. Mayor, we believe, you know, we believe we've identified it and tried to expose what it would look like. We certainly envision that during final site plan, when we ultimately go back to the planning commission, were we to go back to the planning commission, that a landscape plan would have to be reviewed and ultimately approved. And though we have not given you a final landscape plan, and Anthony tried to do the best he could to explain, there are a number of places where we did not show all of the vegetation that actually exists between residential neighbors. In fact, there's no vegetation that we've identified in the video on the Maple Hill neighbors. However, if you go out there, obviously there's a lot of vegetation. And the photographs that we submitted to you, you could see the vegetation that exists behind the neighbors on Maple Hill to their property line and ultimately to our building. So.
The, you showed the property line.
Correct.
And then there was quite a bit of a setback. Do you have any idea from the property line to when the retaining wall in the back near the house, near Maple Hill Residence, how big that is?
So just so I want to make sure, trustee board, that we understand your question. The distance from the property line to our closest easterlymost retaining wall?
That's east, yes.
Let's just make sure, I think we're talking back here.
Yes, exactly.
So we're talking from our property line to the retaining wall. So to the retaining wall here, it's about sixty feet from the property line. We'd have some dimensions here.
Okay.
Hundred and thirty-two in the building and seventy-five from the nearest house to the retaining wall.
So it's about sixty feet from the retaining wall to the house, and the wall jogs back in this location a little bit?
Let's put this up here so it's visible.
So.
Spin it around.
Can I turn this around?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, so we said in this location where the wall is further from the property line, it's about sixty feet. And here is a small section where it jogs towards
Right.
the houses, and that is about a thirty-five feet.
Okay, great, thank you.
I'll just give that a quick little spin, so. And just, I was asked by, turn it this way. I was asked by the camera operator to make sure that the record was clear so that he doesn't get phone calls from people saying they couldn't hear what we were saying. We were just trying to identify the separation distance in response to the question from the property line to the retaining wall at both its nearest location and for its long run. And then we also talked about the distance from the closest house to the retaining wall.
About the house, is that on the north?
We can't, can't ask questions from the audience, you need to come up here. We'll do that in just a second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Did any of the board members have questions? Okay, so.
The word I was looking for in that rock wall was brittle.
Was brittle.
Brittle, not fragile. Although brittle connotes fragile.
We're not going to argue about brittle and fragile.
It's the word that, there was a word that I was surprised.
And we heard the question, and actually my client wanted me to make clear that obviously the integrity of that westerly retaining wall that exists today is critical to the site as well as to Bedford Road Route 117. We absolutely understand that it will be incumbent upon anyone that does any work on this site, whether it for assisted living or single-family residences or otherwise. Obviously, the integrity of that retaining wall has to be safeguarded, if not bolstered, as Mr. Guccione was saying. So we expect that would be a condition of any kind of approval.
While you still have the ruler in your hand, can you please measure? And I think that's one of the questions that were just going to be asked. The, from the property line of Benchmark, yeah, on that side, yeah.
So the closest point to the wall to the property line is about forty-three feet. And to the house, I think I heard too, is about fifty-five feet.
And that's from the retaining wall?
From the, our most retaining wall. Just over here, it's forty-four feet from the retaining wall to the property line.
And on the plans that were previously submitted, again, we also give distances from the building to that house.
Hundred and seventy-six feet.
And that's a hundred and seventy-six feet.
From the building to the house, okay.
From the closest corner of the building to that house is a hundred and seventy-six feet.
Hundred and seventy-six feet.
Okay, any further questions on the board? All right, great. So we'll segue to questions and comments from the audience that pertain to what we've heard tonight. And when we have gotten through all of that, I'll invite the presentations that have been proposed by community members. So questions directed to what we've heard tonight? Come on up and identify yourself, name and address, and.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the board. My name is John Strobel. I live on 66 Maple Hill. I have a rhetorical question for Mr. Steinmetz. On your survey about home values that you presented, it says that there should be no negative impact, possibly even a positive impact. But in all the construction that's been done in neighboring villages around here, Ammonk, which is complete.
Stay close to the mic, I don't want people not.
Which is complete, and already there's a hard shell up there. It's built in a commercial zone next to all other commercial buildings. The residents didn't insist that it's built next to their house so that they can increase their home value. In Chappaqua, they're looking to buy seventeen acres in a commercial zone to build an assisted living facility, not in a residential neighborhood. If I was a resident and living, listening to Mr. Steinmetz, I would want it next door to me, but nobody does. In White Plains, they built it on Nord Street, which is a commercial building. It used to be the old White Plains Hospital. Nobody wants it next to their house. So I don't understand how Mr. Steinmetz is saying that increases value minimum, it doesn't decrease any value. It's, it's positive impact for the neighborhood, but yet no villagers around here are doing it. Also, when I have studied Benchmark, I can't find, I could be wrong, but I can't find any facility that was built in a residential neighborhood that existed before they came. Their facilities are surrounded by homes, the homes came afterwards. I could be wrong, but I can't find any of it. So maybe they do, but I'd like to see that study. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, good evening, board. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Yuri Parischeck. I live at 45 Maple Hill in Pleasantville. I have some simple questions. First of all, how much income does the village make?
Our total revenue?
Total income, yeah.
About twelve, well, it depends on various funds, but twelve, thirteen million a year?
Sixteen point nine million, from what I measured.
You mean from taxes?
No, from everything.
What did you say?
The total income to the village is sixteen point nine million.
That might be true, including water fund and all that.
Water fund and all the other funds.
Everything, everything, everything. The, the school board makes about forty million in total. I look at, yes, the last time we were here, I suggested that the total income to the village was going to be about sixty thousand dollars. I was pounced upon, well, it was an exaggeration. I was corrected that it was going to be a lot more than that, three hundred thousand dollars. The estimates in the document today show about four hundred and some thousand dollars total, with the village getting about twenty-two percent, which is about eighty thousand dollars, which is not that far from original estimate I made.
Well, can I just stop you on that? I, I don't, the, what you characterized as getting pounced upon was our saying that I think the average homeowner is interested in their total tax bill. And their total tax bill is based solely on the tax ratables in the community. So the school district is taxing based on the tax ratables in the community. Increased ratables mean there are more people paying village taxes, school taxes, and county taxes.
Indeed, but my point was that this village would make about sixty thousand dollars. That was the point I made last time. The second thing is if you compare sixty thousand dollars to sixteen point nine million, it's less than half a percent. So for half a percent, we're going to change the entire structure of the village, north of the village. We're going to change its characteristics. We're going to have people who have lived there for a long time and paid several tens of million dollars of taxes over the period of time disrupted. We're going to have the schist blown out from underneath to twenty-three feet of depth in some parts of that area. We're going to have the area completely changed for less than half a percent. And yes, let's look at the rest of the income. The school makes forty million dollars. If you do the prorate on that, they make less than half a percent of increased income. So why are we doing this? The other question is to Mr. Sax, I'd like some, perhaps some help. As I understand it, and I could be completely wrong, so it could be corrected. If the applicant goes for a floating zone, then the constraints on the building size are not the same as they get when they go for a spot zone. Is that correct?
When they go for a spot zone?
Yes.
There's no such thing as a spot zone here. Spot zone is something that is not allowed under New York state law.
I see. So if they go for a rezoning of that to, what do you call it? Was it?
Special permit you brought me about?
Yes. So under the constraints of that particular zoning, are the constraints of the building height requirements different? Or are they the same as of a floating zone?
It, it depends what the text would be that the board of trustees decides to adopt.
I see.
That is, you could create a special permit use with similar requirements to a floating zone use. It's just, as Joel indicated earlier, the special permit use provides less legislative flexibility in assessing the relative merits and problems presented by each application.
Thank you. So my point remains, why are we doing this for less than half a percent, which is an undetectable amount of money for this village? Thank you.
Andrew Layton, 41st Summit Place. Just a question about the first of the two studies on housing values that was presented. The way I believe it was termed was that people moving into a property where there existed a multifamily property next to it saw an increased appreciation of their value compared to neighboring areas. Is that correct? It did not indicate anything about the value of the house existing before and after the property was put in place?
Mr. Mayor, do you want me to respond? I don't want to do anything, this is.
You're perfectly willing to, you're not certainly required to.
Absolutely happy to.
Okay, you need to do so at the mic.
Mr. Layton, that's exactly what the quote from the housing study was. It related to appreciation and the houses, quote, "The homes appreciated faster over ten years than homes without multifamily neighbors." So that was what the Housing Institute was designed to study, was impact on value and appreciation. The question there being, was there a depreciation or a slower appreciation? And the data there showed the National Association of Home Builders that the appreciation rate was faster.
One reason I look at that carefully is the appreciation rate may be faster given that the homes depreciated upon the facility being put in place and then therefore had a lower base to start from when considering their value increase. So you may find, that study could in fact be due to a drop in home value due to the presence of the facility that slowly, over a period of time, may show an increase in appreciation, not counting that, not counting the previous value from before the facility was in place. So given that, I don't know how valuable that particular study is in this particular case to look at the values of the homes in the area existing. Thank you.
Understood.
My name is Eileen West. I live at Foxwood. I am one of the people that submitted the alternate text amendment and letter to the board that Mr. Steinmetz was referring to. The only thing at this point that I want to address, because we talked back and forth about it, is the concept of a floating zone versus the concept of a special permit. And I just want to be clear, we weren't doing it as an either-or. We were saying, if there's a floating zone, adopt the requirements of the current RPO district, which has a special permit requirement. And then you get the protections of the special permit and you get the legislative flexibility. So if anything, it's a broader idea where the community could be protected, where you're going to take into account the scale of a project, the size of the project, the impact on the community, and the applicant's desire to do this with a larger piece of land, which is what they're trying to do. And this would accomplish both. So that's, that's all I'm saying.
Okay, thanks for that point. Other comments before we go to the presentations you all have? Sure.
My presenting. I'm Bill Stoller of 69 Maple Hill. And I just want to go over a few things very briefly based on some of the comments that Mr. Steinmetz had to make and some of the documents that were delivered to you, large quantity of documents, things. I have no particular expertise in the geotechnical areas or the zoning areas or the things like that, so I'm not going to speak to those. But I just want to say, he was, he was saying that you had asked him, surely Benchmark has some data on the value of the houses, some sort of canned report that they've prepared in the past. And he said, well, it turns out they didn't have it. Well, why didn't they have it? Well, they didn't have it because in general, they have not built assisted living facilities in existing residential neighborhoods, which is the thing they're proposing to do here. So why would they have a study like that? They haven't done it, they haven't done it before. They haven't been faced with this problem, so-called, of determining whether the values would go up or down when they put a large facility into an existing residential neighborhood. Then he cited two studies, one from the National Association of Home Builders, I think it was, and one was from MIT, about the impact. And my neighbor Andrew was talking about how he viewed that. And I just want to say that, once again, Mr. Steinmetz keeps referring to this as some sort of a multifamily residential development, as if it's some sort of a condominium or an apartment house. But it's not. It's an assisted living facility. These studies were done on multifamily buildings, multifamily developments. And they compared multifamily developments to the, and, excuse me. They used multifamily developments and then looked at the impact on single-family homes existing in the neighborhood or to be, or that were sold in the neighborhood. They were not looking at the construction of a commercial facility, which is what the assisted living facility is. So that's one thing I wanted to say. I also want to talk about the visual presentation, which was slightly different than before. And I brought this up the last time, was a visual presentation on their part. And that is that, and I work in the computer business, some of, people here know something about it. It's not an exact representation. It's as, it's as best you can get, combining Google Earth and the elements they put in. But I found that, once again, I was seeing what I would characterize as some visual distortion as you looked at some of these flyovers. Especially in the first part, when they swung around and showed you those two buildings in Foxwood. And then their consultant was saying, oh, well, look, it's not, they're the same size as our building. They were showing you the footprint and the size of two, two-story buildings in Foxwood, and their building is three stories. How can they possibly compare those two-story buildings to a much larger three-story building? Yeah, the combined footprint of those two buildings might be close to the footprint of what they're doing, but they're just not as big. It's not one, one big thing. but they're just not as big. It's not one, one big thing. At Foxwood, all those buildings are broken up. There's parking lots, there's landscaping around them. Here, they're talking about one large thing dug into the hill, twenty-three feet they're excavating, blasting or whatever they're going to do, and surrounding it with landscaping, not landscaping in between smaller, lower buildings. So there was this visual distortion as it came around. It really looked like the Foxwood buildings were the same size. And we all know from living here, the Foxwood buildings are not three stories. They're not as big as this is going to be, what they're talking about. I just want to touch on very briefly a couple of these reports. I just flagged a couple of things, just for brief remarks, there's a lot going on here. The first report was, report was, it's a year old, from this Senior Housing Analytics, S-H-A, about the market qualifications. This is a report that was basically prepared not for you, but for them, to determine whether it would pay for Benchmark to go forward with a development in this area. And it's very detailed, it's got a lot of, you know, facts, figures, penetration rates and all sorts of things, I don't understand. But I just wanted to just say a couple of things. First of all, they say right away, they did not conduct a competitive survey nor visit the site. It's also a year old. Since this was done in, well, the report is dated November sixth, two thousand and twelve. I presume it was done in the month or so before that. Since this was done, and they show a five-mile circle from the site and how many assisted livings or similar facilities are within that five miles or close to that five miles. Since a year ago, the site in Armagh has come up. That's certainly within or close to this five-mile circle that wasn't, didn't exist before. Since then, there's a facility going up in the town of Greenberg, as Mr. Steinmetz will note, he represents, sunrise, right? Sunrise, any, what, some?
Brightview.
Brightview, can't get the name straight, sorry. There's one going up there. There's talk about one going up in Chappaqua. There's probably some that are going to talk about one in Mount Kisco. There's many more of these.
Where's the one in Chappaqua?
I don't know where the one in Chappaqua is. That was John?
The one in Chappaqua was presented in Pleasantville, in Chappaqua Crossing, I'm not sure.
In Chappaqua Crossing, there was, there was talk of it. I don't.
Yeah, I'm not aware of that.
I'm not aware, that's the first I heard of it myself, but there's, the point is that, that things have changed since this report was done for them. This report was not for you, this report was for them. And it talks about that. It also talks about.
I mean, they gave it to us.
They gave it to you.
In response to the question of.
Whether this was a.
An economically viable.
Right, but it, but it's not up to the board, it would seem to me, to determine whether a development of any kind in the village is going to be economically viable for the person or the company that opens it. If someone's going to open up a sandwich shop, you wouldn't, you wouldn't be, you wouldn't be asking, "Well, should we allow them to do it because they're going to make money, or they're going to collapse?"
But if, if someone proposes, comes to us and seeks a zoning change for a use that none of us believe is viable, and that we would have then the potential to provide a zoning change to a use that collapses under its own weight in no time at all, that, I mean, clearly those issues are germane to us. It's not as though any of us are in our position to make a detailed business analysis, nor should we.
Right.
But I'm pleased to see at least the applicant's representation of the reason they think this is a good place to do it.
Well, the reason I think it's a good place to do it is summarized on another page. It goes on and on for many pages, but in the summary, it says that, it's talking about the demand, and it says, "Affluence is very strong." In other words, they're talking about putting this in a wealthy part of Westchester. This part of the Westchester. Pleasantville is not the wealthiest, but we're pretty well, pretty well off, but we're surrounded by even wealthier communities such as Armagh and Chappaqua, and parts of the town of Osning, parts of Brightcliff, et cetera. And they also talk about performance and positioning, and it's talking about the overall rate levels. In other words, how much can you charge for an AL and an MC? I believe that's assisted living and a memory care, right? Right? I got that right? Good. Oh, I guessed right. And they're talking about overall rate levels in the AL and the MC and the immediate area are considerably above those in the New York NSA, which is the metro statistical area, which is multiple counties, New York City, and everything surrounding except Long Island, which has its own NSA, I believe. And they're saying there's a fifteen percent premium. They can charge fifteen percent more for assisted living in this area than in general in the metropolitan area, and twenty-five percent more than in the metro, in the metro area for memory care. So that's why this, this development is very, that's why they're spending a lot of time and money coming before you over and over and hiring all these consultants.
If you were going to spend thirty-six million dollars, wouldn't you do that?
Yes, you would. Yes, you would. I'm not saying, I'm not saying they shouldn't do this, I'm just saying.
I'm glad I saw something. I mean, I wouldn't want somebody building something here that they know is going to fail. Why would you?
I wouldn't want it to fail either, but I don't want them to build this.
I just don't understand.
I don't want them to build this. Then we have the economic impact analysis that comes from the University of Massachusetts somewhere. And Benchmark through Mr. Steinmetz has said over and over again about the potential, the economic advantages that will accrue from this, and he's talking about more than just the property taxes. And in the, in the report here from the UMass, in the development phase, they're talking about a total of nearly forty-nine million dollars in economic activity in the Westchester County, New York region. What is the Westchester County, New York region? There's not a mention in this entire report of the village of Pleasantville, or the town of Mount Pleasant. They're talking about how much money will accrue to the Westchester County, New York region. That could be Westchester, that could be the Bronx, that could be parts of Connecticut, Rockland County, Putnam, Dutchess, New Jersey, wherever these people are going to come from. It talks about indirect and induced employment, including employees of local suppliers to the construction and startup phase. Pleasantville doesn't have, I don't believe, Pleasantville doesn't have any local suppliers who are capable of delivering steel beams and truckloads of concrete to Benchmark when they build this. All this stuff's going to come from outside. So as I said, there's, there's nothing in here that's going to be local to us. They talk about full, the full operations phase. Will support seventy-four direct, sorry, seventy-four, seventy-four full and part-time jobs with total labor costs of more than three point five million. How many of those employees are going to be employees from the village of Westchester, the immediate local area that we care about? Because they talk about increased income taxes. What I'm saying is, they've talked about how this is going to be good for us by building this in a residential neighborhood, how it's going to increase all this, and here this report doesn't even mention what's going to happen to the, in the village of Pleasantville. Local businesses that are going to be increasing value. These, all these people who are going to build it, these construction workers, they're not, they're not two-hundred-and-ninety-four construction workers who are coming from the village of Pleasantville.
Well, are you finished with?
With that thought, yes.
Okay, so here's what I'd say about that. I, I fully understand, and I respect the concerns of all the neighbors about the idea of this different use in their neighborhood and its potential impacts. That's different from the question of whether there are spin-off benefits unrelated to the issues in the neighborhood, and, and very clearly there are. You know, we are all the people that spend our, our lives going to Chamber of Commerce meetings and talking to community members who are involved in local business in Pleasantville, but also in Westchester and beyond. And boy, that's a web that's knit together very tightly. So for example, when somebody buys something in Westchester County and pays sales tax, that sales tax goes into the big pot and gets divided up by all the communities. Somebody buys a car in White Plains, we get a little piece of it.
Very small piece.
Of course. But the, the point I want to make is, I'm not sure it moves the ball down the field to argue that, you know, to, obviously you should challenge assertions about economic benefits that you think are specious, but the idea that increased economic activity is a bad thing.
I'm not saying, I am not, I am not saying.
I just, I just want to say, I've spent hundreds of hours at meetings like this on all kinds of subjects, and, and you know, that's a mindset we have to turn around. That doesn't mean that all development is appropriate, and I'm the first to say, we're trying to find Pleasantville appropriate development. But I just, I bristle a little bit at the suggestion that a profit-making company making a significant investment in our community and hiring a bunch of people to build the thing and then run the thing and buy food and buy services and fix the boiler is a bad thing. It isn't, it's a good thing.
I'm not talking, I'm not talking.
And we have to change the tape. Could you hold, hold that thought?
We're back. Sorry for this. Pause there while we switch tapes.
I was about to say, I'm not challenging the idea that this is going to be an economic benefit to the county or the area or the region. I'm not challenging the idea that this is going to make money or should, or should not make money. That's not what I'm talking about. I'm saying that at, part of the assertion has been from Mr. Steinmetz and some of the presentations he's given to you and some of the written things he's given to you, is how much this is going to benefit Pleasantville. And so far, the only thing that we see as benefiting Pleasantville, there's nothing in this study or the other ones, Pleasantville directly, is the increase in property tax.
You can't say that. You can't say that. You don't know who's going to be employed there. You don't know, you don't know the economic impact.
They don't either.
Other than what is listed.
Where do they, where do they say?
But they're giving, but they're giving assumptions. You can't say they're not going to employ anybody.
I didn't say they're not going to employ anybody. I said they're not going to employ two-hundred-and-ninety-four people.
But you're making a lot of assumptions. I, I, as the mayor said, I understand your point, but I think on this, you know, you're not really making a good point here. I, I think you need to move on from that point. I really do. I, I think that you can't, no one can say what the economic specific impact is going to be on employment in the village of Pleasantville and, and how it, how that specifically, the village of Pleasantville. The best they can possibly do is project, and that's what they've done in the economic development, the economic.
Right, they projected, they projected a much wider area, and they've not brought it down back to the village level in any, any sense. They haven't even brought it down to the county level. They're at the regional, Westchester County, New York regional level, forty-nine million dollars. I, I don't see how that supports the argument that Benchmark has been making, that this is an economic benefit, this is an economic benefit other than property taxes to the village of Pleasantville. That's, that is what I'm saying. We can move on, we can move on, we can move on, move on. The only thing I want to say about the geotechnical exploration, I have absolutely no expertise here. Brian already corrected himself about it being brittle as opposed to fragile. Brittle and fragile do seem to be, be pretty close. Is that they're talking about blasting as opposed to jackhammering all this rock. And also, this rock seems to be in the back of the area where they have to dig down the twenty-three feet. That's the area that's closest to the homes, including mine. And, you know, blasting may make it quicker. Blasting may make it make less noise, but blasting is an activity that has inherent, I don't want to say dangers, but can have unexpected consequences. We saw this with the blasting that was done when they widened two-eighty-seven. They, there was some blasting done to take down some rock where they were building some new exits or entrances or something like that, and something went pretty badly wrong, despite all the technical expertise of the people involved. You can't necessarily always be correct about that. And I, I'm very concerned about the idea that, that somebody, in order to build this, would have to not only go down twenty-three feet of soil, topsoil and substrata, and then finally get to some bedrock and have to blast the bedrock out. That, that concerns me and it concerns my neighbors, especially those who live closest to it, and I think.
Understandably, I agree.
And, and I think it'll show us a bit of concern about the condition of that wall, because there is going to be a shockwave. I mean, obviously of some sort. I don't know how, they're going to try to control it, they're going to try to monitor it, but that wall has been there since nineteen-twenty-something, I believe. We don't really know what condition it's in. You set off dynamite, you know, a hundred yards away from it, what's going to happen? The other thing was somewhere in the report of the geotechnical person, they were talking about having a rock crusher on site to take some of these boulders that would be, either exist there or might be created by the blasting to grind them down into smaller sizes they could use as fill. I, I think the, I understand that the geotechnical consultant here is performing a very detailed and technical analysis of the property. That's what the job was to do. But they seem to be pretty tone deaf to the actual location, that this is a location, this is not just a wide-open construction site. This is a location surrounded by private, single-family homes and across the street from Foxwood. That the, the dangers and the noise that would be created by this. This is one of the reasons why we're, not the only reason, but this is one of the reasons why we are opposed. Why I say "we," I, I speak for me, I speak for my wife, I hope I speak for some of my neighbors. I don't clear my remarks with my neighbors first. But one of the reasons that we are opposed to putting this here is because it is a long-existing residential neighborhood. And in order to get this in here, to get this large commercial facility in there, they have to level it out, they have to dig down, they have to blast, they have to do all these things. And, and that sort of tells you about the appropriateness of placing a facility of this size in this kind of a neighborhood. And it's kind of, like I said, it's kind of tone deaf for the engineer to say, "Well, how about a rock crusher?" A rock crusher on site? Really?
I mean, in one respect, I'm glad the geotechnical guy is not trying to do a public relations spin.
No, he's not.
Tell it like it is, right? You know?
He is not. He is not. And I was going to speak very briefly about the, the traffic. I'm not going to say much about it. One of our neighbors, P.J. O'Rourke, is a traffic engineer, and he works, his firm works mostly with the MTA.
And we got a detailed email from him.
He did send an email to you and to Patty.
Right, got that today.
And today. And one of the things, he pointed out several things. I'll just mention in public a couple of things he pointed out. One was when the traffic study.
Can I ask? I had not seen this.
Oh, okay.
So I would appreciate having your comments in context of having seen his email and been able to read his email. So, I mean, I guess you can give it.
I'm just, I'm just going to say what his, I'm just going to quickly summarize what his email says, you can read it in full. How's that? One of the, there were just several brief points. One was that the traffic study, the morning the traffic study.
Probably do, but I mean, we're going to just feed it through the process.
Right.
Obviously give it to BFJ, give it back to the applicant, and they can respond to it. I mean, it, it was many paragraphs long.
Okay, I would say that, several, among the points that he made, and I'm not a traffic expert, I'm just going to repeat what he said because he couldn't be here tonight. One is that the traffic study was done on a day when there was a delayed opening at BRS. BRS didn't open until eight forty-five that day. So I don't know how that affects the count that they did in the morning, but there was a delayed opening at BRS that morning, and that wasn't a, it wasn't a snow closing, that was scheduled delay on the calendar.
September eleventh.
September eleventh, yes, ma'am. The other thing that he was talking about, and further down in the email, he was talking about the traffic of the construction trucks, especially the dump trucks that would be taking all this excavated material out. How many thousands of trips in and out this would be, and the burden of that on local roads and the community. So these are, like I said, you can pick apart every individual thing we say against this. We can pick apart talking about the economics for the village. We can pick apart how much money is going to come in, in tax revenue, the traffic, the construction, the noise, everything. But take it all together, if you put it all together as a larger picture, these are the small things that add up to the reason that we think it is totally inappropriate to have a development of this size, a building of this size, a construction project of this magnitude in what has been for sixty, seventy or more years, a totally residential neighborhood of the village. Single-family homes, modest multifamily in Foxwood. That's what's around it. One of the PDFs that they included that they haven't shown you tonight, I don't know where it is, it was a, there's a slide of it somewhere. They, they showed you the, it was an aerial shot.
Right.
Showed you the, their site and the church, and then all around it, from the air, what you saw. All around it, what you see from the air are single-family homes. There's nothing, absolutely nothing like that, anywhere near it. The entire surrounding community in their aerial shot. Yet you're being asked to say that this is an appropriate development, that a commercial facility that happens to be an assisted living, as I've said previously, an assisted living, an apartment house, a hotel, an office building, whatever it is, something of this size and magnitude does not belong in this area for many reasons, some of which I've tried to cite tonight, others of which I've cited before, and I'm sure I'll find some more for the next time we get together.
Okay.
I do, I do want to say the September eleventh traffic study was the afternoon hours that were done, not the morning, so the delayed opening.
I'm just repeating what.
We have P.J.'s email, and we're going to send it both to the FJR consultants and also back to the applicant.
Absolutely. I'm just, I just, I just saw that in his email, and I mentioned it, I didn't look at this.
No problem.
Didn't read the study myself, I'm not a traffic engineer. I'd have no idea what it was about. I love any of my neighbors learning more to say, we do have a presentation about the financial, is there, someone else wants to speak? Are we still, we still want to speak, and then we'll have the, and then we'll have the presentation about.
That would be great.
About the financial aspect. About the financial aspect.
My name is Dan Blaney. I'm at fifty Maple Hill Road. Thank you for this opportunity. Um, this is the zoning map that the design team has submitted recently.
That's the map that tries to identify other parcels where this proposed floating zone could be applied.
Yes, and that was actually my specific request. It's a very, very good start, and I have two requests.
Okay.
Um, one of which I hope is, uh, positive. Um, they do all sorts of coloring and schemes and all that. Uh, my intent was to hand this out to a couple of neighborhoods and say, look, you're affected by this, and maybe we should come to a meeting or two. Um, but it doesn't show explicitly where all these properties, if you were to, um, take a bunch of properties together and put them together and, and say I could do now an assisted living facility. Um, it just shows like a dash line going down towards ShopRite and all that. It doesn't even show the location of that other hypothetical future assisted living facility that's down near Lake Street. So it's a little lacking. So either A, they could fix it up on their dime, or.
Question is whether, it may very well be, there's some question as to whether the, the, the Jewish Healthcare Association site, the, the one near Lake Street and Broadway would actually be captured by this floating zone or not based on its distance from commercial center. So, uh, um, the question, I'm not sure how you would identify, you could identify every state road, uh.
It is.
It is now.
It is on there. Yeah.
It is on there. The hypothetical of accumulating multiple properties to create a big enough site, I'm not sure, I mean, I get, not sure how you would figure that out, but.
Can I, can I just interrupt your moment for a second for Joel? Because couldn't we include in our zoning text that, um, this type of thing, uh, you know, there could be the proximity, uh, we can, we can put in there a proximity that there couldn't be another, uh.
A separation requirement.
Yes, there'd be like, there'd have to be like a three mile separation.
There are many zoning ordinance that have minimum distances between uses. Like a very common one, if a community allows fast food establishments, you could say, you can't have one more than fifteen hundred feet.
Right, nail salons, things like that. Yeah, yeah, we have that.
Just a point of information, if I may, Trustee Rogers, you're aware, the planning commission raised this issue. It's one of the few things that we actually changed. When we got the suggestions from your board and the planning commission, we made some changes. I apologize.
Sure.
But we changed that. That, that's actually in the current draft is a half mile, a minimum half mile separation, which again, it's all within your prerogative to decide whether you like it or not. But we thought that was a prudent comment from your planning commission along the lines that Mr. Blaney is talking about, and we, we drafted it in there.
So then that would, speaking to this.
Half mile, okay.
Yeah, a half mile, maybe, maybe half mile's not enough. I don't know. I mean, or maybe it's too much. I don't know.
Well, the village isn't really all that big.
Yeah, it's not that big. It's only, it's one point seven square miles, I think, uh, but, uh, that would, if it was a half a mile.
That may or may not be on the fringe, right?
Right.
So I guess getting back to my, my request, either one, they could draw it up a little differently, that everything that would be along the state road could be highlighted such that a neighbor would know. Or B, they could hand over the CAD files such that I could do the doctor.
Do it yourself?
Yeah.
I thought that it was that already, was it not? I thought that the.
It's, it's very good. It's almost there. They have an orange line. It's dashed down the state road.
See, the purple is frontage along a county or state road, located within a quarter of a mile of commercial and personal services establishments, right?
We can go back to that.
And the orange dash line is the, right.
Just, your point is just to highlight a little more boldly which this, which are the state roads.
If I pass this out to a neighbor, they're going to say, so what? When my, when my point is to say, hey, look, you're affected by this.
Does, does everybody understand, and, and I think you, you do, that the quarter of a mile limit from the commercial area would exclude the other site that we've been talking about, the JCC site?
I think it's a half mile.
And just by way of.
And it's probably a business move.
I thought it was a facility.
And just, just by way of report, a, as you all know, the JCCA indicated to us some months ago that they were, uh, thinking about this as a possibility, but, uh, at least so far as we know, they've made no move towards actually taking any steps about doing it, so.
Right. And that might be a business move by, by them saying only a quarter of a mile or a half mile such that they can't have any competition. So we should look at that.
Well, actually, that number existed before the JCCA thing was even noted about.
If we want our legacy to be assisted living facilities in Pleasantville, we should look at that point.
Okay.
No, I, no, I'm, unless I'm wrong, Mr. Steinmetz, I thought, Mr. Steinmetz, I thought the applicant's proposal was a half mile, which would allow the JCC, and it was the neighbors who want to shrink that to a quarter of a mile, which would exclude the JCC. So it's just the opposite, I think.
Okay. Okay, point well taken. Thank you. Did you have more, or?
Uh, yes, I have, I have a list. Um, so last time I talked about the master plan and how the master plan reflects, uh, or does not reflect inclusion of such a facility being in this part of town. And then I was told good information, which was by state law, if the master plan does not support this project, then it can't go forward. So then one of two things would have to happen. Number one, you would have to do some sort of a text amendment or something like that. Or two, you just tell them that you're wasting your time and we should probably stop this.
Well, in this process, we would have to, we would have to update the master plan, uh, as part of this process. In what's happening here is we're examining, uh, an application for use that isn't really anticipated in our master plan, and yet is clearly illegitimate use and one that's a societal benefit. Not necessarily in this place, but when these things come forward, the master plan dates back to the mid-nineties. Uh, we're well aware of the need to be revisiting it in a number of ways, and we clearly would have to do that. Fair to say, Joel?
Yes. Okay, so I mean, what I'm hearing.
That's gone off and, and especially.
Because we can't always anticipate what's coming, so we wouldn't go in and say, well, in the master plan now, we're going to put these. It, it, this is generally the process by which it happens. So if this goes forward, then the master plan has to change. If it doesn't, it doesn't.
Okay.
And, and, and that happens, I mean, interestingly, there, you know, proposals might come down that virtually everybody thought were great, but still require that same process. We have all kinds of aspects of our zoning in our master plan, as does every community that's been around for a while, that don't quite capture modernity.
So you don't see this as being any great hurdle, and I thought the master plan was something that you guys held as being a group Bible or something like that?
It's a living document. It's constantly changing.
Right, and, and it's a document that, that the village itself creates.
Yeah, I understand. So if I wanted to put up Madison Square Garden on the site.
You'd have to, you'd have to go through the process.
Plan board first.
You'd be standing at that podium a long time.
Okay.
Look, don't, 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 don't misconstrue that or, or spin it as, you know, we'll do anything, you know, for anybody, because that, I mean, the history of this village is not, is, is to the contrary. Well, I think, you know, the reason we're all here is that something has arisen, something has been proposed that presents advantages and problems. And those advantages and problems look different from where you sit. And, uh, we have the unenviable task of trying to sort it out and decide what to do, so.
The, the MLA site was, there was a stop and shop proposed there.
That's right.
And that would have meant a big, um, master plan change and.
Lots of people thought it would have been a good thing. I happened to be one of the people that thought it was a bad thing. I, I still thi, I still think it would have been.
Okay, so now getting back to the process, um, there was a couple of comments, and I have a couple of comments, you know, about, uh, the noise, construction schedule, things like that. Is that more appropriate to talk about when they get to the planning commission? Or will that have already been approved, the floating zone, and then the ship has already sailed?
Well, I mean, the, the planning commission's purview involves the site plan, and there would be a lot of detailed review of exactly how it's laid out, and how the parking works, and how the buffering works, and what the land's plan looks like, and view angles and all that kind of stuff. In the end, if it got to them with the zoning text amendment approved, the reality would be the thing is going to get built. Uh, planning is interested and would build into the site plan, uh, the appropriate requirements about how it gets built, and erosion control, and obviously the impacts of, of blasting and all of that would come into play. But they would be, uh, working on, on the details of how the whole thing is executed, because at that point, in the hypothetical that the zoning change is approved, the applicant would have come with, and as, as of right use. Um, you know, believe me, the planning commission would have lots of opinions and lots of areas where they would hold any applicant's feet to the fire. But, I mean, there is no question, and it's certainly important to all of us to realize that building something like this is, is, uh, you know, a, a, a difficult process. And for the period of time when the construction is hot and heavy, it's no fun. No doubt about it. So, um, I, I think, you know.
So the answer is yes, it would be in the planning commission.
I mean, further to Bill's point, it's just helpful to know, well, you know, what does it all mean?
Okay, so asking questions like specifics, the retaining wall, uh, project construction duration.
Yeah.
I mean, everything seems to take fifteen to twenty-four months, in my experience. But I mean, is, are they going to do that, or is it going to be in stages? They can build half of it, and then the other half, a couple of years later?
I mean, I don't know if that staging is done, but I mean, the applicant could respond if they want to the, the sen, your, your sense of the overall construction period from the, from the, the point at which a shovel goes in the ground to snip at the ribbon. Is that something you're in a position to come in on? So, you want to?
Very briefly, Mr. Cook has indicated that they, they believe the construction schedule would be fourteen months. And answering Mr. Blaney's question that I, I thought was an important one, this would not be done in terms of build one phase and then come back six months later or two years later and build. It's one building, um, you know, it's got some critical internal core materials and, and functionality. It would be built at one time, fourteen month duration. And certainly during the planning commission study, were we to get to that point, we would go through all of those details, including noise mitigation, sedimentation, erosion control mitigation, and, and, and those things would be fleshed out in greater detail beyond what we're doing now for secret purposes.
Okay, so there's, there's rants on that. It sounds like, you know.
Somewhat expected, reasonable. Okay, so, so when they did that presentation, and, and it was nice that you pointed out that they had all the trees still on the lot, and all they did was plop the, the footprint of the building down so that it looks like it's got overgrown with trees. There's no parking lot. They didn't have, um, I don't know, I'm sure the Maple Hill side retaining walls. It looked very cozy, but it's not. Um, out of the three point nine acres, I believe, three point five is going to be cleared. I'm not positive on that number, but it's very close. And I know last time we talked about, um, the footprint can only be something like twenty-five or twenty-seven percent of the entire, um, lot size. Is there some sort of a requirement, minimum max, for including, um, the parking lot? Because this parking lot and everything, the footprint, I mean, if you put that on the Parkway field, the parking lot would cover the whole thing. Is there anything like that that we can talk about?
I mean, there, there are all kinds of issues in the state zoning building code about floor ratios, the whole nine yards. I'm, I'm certainly not qualified to address those, but, uh, again, in the planning commission process, they'll be reviewing the, the, as part of the stormwater management and all of that, the percentage of impervious surface and how the stormwater is managed and all that. No question about it, it's a heavily developed site.
Okay, but you're not concerned with the clearing? I'm not concerned about, I'm not talking about stormwater.
I mean, if, if, if that, if that thing could remain a forest, I'd be happy, but we don't own it.
No, no, I understand. There's a difference between putting up five houses and a lot of trees remaining, and putting up this and no trees remaining. That's a big difference.
I, 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 in addition to which, and, and believe me, having been around the block a few times, uh, on projects of much lesser scale, uh, there's no certainty of what a future owner of a future parcel will do. And, and issues arise all the time about, you know, a neighbor who'd prefer a heavily wooded lot, and the neighbor next door would prefer a big green lawn. You know, those kinds of issues are hypothetical, but the, you know, the reason we are here today is that this site has been the subject of various stalled development ideas for something like twenty-five years. They have all failed for one reason or another, uh, and this is the one that's on the table now. And so we're going through this extended process to look at it.
Right, and it's good you bring that up, because I, I guess what, what it brings it up to is that the, the owner of the property, what I've read, what I've heard, I'm not sure if it's a fact, it appears that they need more money than they could get, you know, because they have to fix up their house, their church, um, than if they sold it to single lots. So because they didn't keep up with their maintenance, now the residents of Maple Hill have to pay.
We don't, we don't have.
And I know that has nothing to do with anything, but that's just not fair on, on all regards.
We don't have any obligation to give a property owner more value to their property than the underlying zoning provides. Clearly, this, and we're, we're not privy to the financial deal, nor should we be, between the church and Benchmark. Uh, but the fact that this would presumably, and I assume you're right, but I don't know that you're right, that this was the highest offer, uh, this kind of use presented the highest offer as compared to any other offer they might have had. I don't know that for a fact, and I understand your point. And I don't, I don't think any of us are here, uh, with, with intent to maximize the dollars back to the Methodist Church. Uh, but I will say what I've said before, the Methodist Church is a, a several hundred year citizen in this community too, and I'm respectful of that. That doesn't mean that their rights trump anybody else's.
Great, so it's an equal, equal opportunity village, good. So I was getting back to the retaining walls. Can I ask a technical question? Because it has to do with the trees, which I'm going to fire malice. Um, are they going to be soldier piles, or is that going to be a cast in place retaining wall? Because a lot of that, if you're, or do you know the answer to that right now at this point? Is there a different methods, and it's going to have an effect on the trees that are near it?
Right. Yeah, no, we haven't actually come up with what the design of the walls will be. More likely than not, the walls at the rear of the property would be a cast in place wall, because a segmental wall would require grid to go back into the site. That's a cut wall. So typically, you don't want to dig out an extra ten or twenty feet to put the grid in. Most likely, that would be some type of a cast in place structural wall. One in the front has the potential to be a segmental wall or some type of a block, because you do have a fill wall there where you could actually, uh, you know, place grid behind that. That's where we're headed right now, but the final design, we're way, way advanced, uh, too early in the stages for that.
So I, I mean, you're obviously one, be asking any questions you want. I don't want us to get spinning our wheels too much about stuff that is.
No, that was good.
Not really easy to answer, so.
That was, that was excellent, because the concern is that if you do a certain type of wall, you're going to end up taking ten more feet of.
Right.
Fifteen more feet of trees.
Okay.
Which is a lot of trees next to the houses.
Okay.
Last comment about the economics, and everybody's going back and forth. You put two economists in a room, you're going to get three different positions. So for every study that they can find that says that my, my house value is going to go up, I can show you five that says it'll go down. I mean, if we just want to throw studies around and say, look, this is what it is. But common sense, if somebody's going to look at a house that's, that's there, this is, well, why look at that? The house values tend to go down, and it's just a gut reaction. And, and for somebody to try to convince me or even just state that, oh, no, you're, this is, this is good for you, I, I don't know how honest that is. Thank you.
Good, thank you. What, Shane? Oh.
As a resident.
Okay. Enter and sign in. Name, name, rank, serial number.
Shane McGaffey, eighty-five, Nana Hagan, wrote.
Should I work the camera?
No, it's okay. I'm covered. I, I just want, and I'm not here to talk about the appropriateness or not appropriateness of this project, but there, some information was, was given earlier, and I just wanted to clarify it. Though the school budget is forty-six point seven million dollars, the tax levy is only thirty-three million dollars.
Shane, for those who may not be aware, is the president of the school board, and therefore he speaks with some authority on this subject.
So I just wanted to let people know that, you know, what a budget is, and what the tax levy is, and what the resident pays.
Say that again?
So the school budget is forty-six point seven million dollars, but the tax levy is on thirty-three million dollars. And I believe your budget, Mr. Mayor, is, um, thirteen million dollars in general, and your, and your tax budget.
But he included funds, but the amount of taxes did not include the contribution to those funds, like water.
So for example, isn't your tax levy nine million dollars?
Nine million dollars, the tax levy is.
And that's the only point. I just want to clarify the numbers. That is all.
Okay, I, I don't want, you're welcome to, but I think.
It's semantics.
I'm just correcting.
Okay.
I want to make my correction in return, right?
Okay.
My name is Yuri Paris. Check out forty-five Maple Hill in Pleasantville. The point being made here is, we're looking at the incremental income to the village and to the school board, right? Look at it this way, you have an amount of money that you can apply against pretty much everything. Maybe some things are restricted. So you have sixteen point nine million that deals with the village. If you take money away from it somewhere, somebody has to pay for it. If you put money into it, it gets better. It's sixteen point nine million dollars that comes into this village, of which we pay about three million for employees and about three million for police, right? It's a lot, and I understand that. I understand why you want to increase taxes. But this is not going to increase taxes by much. Similarly, your point, Mr. Similarly, your point, Mr. Chairman, about the school board. You have forty-six million dollars of income. This income is gonna change it marginally. Yes, thirty-three million is taxes, but it's all income. So let's get it straight, it's income to the, to the village, and it's income to the school board. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Okay. I think it's time, we have a presentation here, pull down the screen, move to the front, is that the case? Do you wanna enter and let us know who you are and where you live?
Sure.
Even though I think I know.
And I think the last time I saw you, Andrew, you were playing Legos in your basement with my son.
It's been a long time.
In like, first grade.
I'd like to think I've come far.
You've come a long way.
Even then, there were signs of.
Of greatness.
All right.
So first, before I set up the presentation, I'd just like to give you some handouts, which is the presentation itself.
Could you just introduce yourself and let us know who you are?
Absolutely.
For the benefit of those watching.
Yeah, that'd be perfect, thank you. Thank you. Hello, my name is Andrew Tom. I do not currently reside in Pleasantville, but my parents do continue to live here, twenty-four Maple Hill Road. And I was, I was born and grew up here all my life, so I have a lot at stake here.
So you're gonna present here, shall we move out of the way, turn the lights off, or do you wanna get started first?
I'd like to give you some handouts too, so you can use the presentation as we go through, and I can walk you through it.
Andrew, the lights will be on once we move to the end. It's the same as, sure, I can see, right?
Uh, in any case, they can just happen. It doesn't care.
Yeah. How are you?
I'm good, aren't you?
Yeah, very good. Were you living even in the city?
Sir.
You live in Manhattan?
Yeah, I'm living in Midtown.
Oh, that's great.
I live at forty-fourth, between First and Second Avenue.
Oh, wow, really, Midtown, Midtown, Midtown.
Thank you.
Garrett's in Minneapolis.
Yeah, I thought so.
Yeah, I think we got along on.
You're on the record here.
Yeah, we're in Boston, right, Boston, San Antonio?
Yeah, Boston, San Antonio. So I don't care. I think you know where, where my son lives.
All right. Oh, yeah, one, oh, yeah, thank you. You can have two.
Let's move, let's go.
Okay, hello, everybody. Once again, my name is Andrew Tom. I used to live at twenty-four Maple Road, but I currently live in Manhattan. Whereas as a background, I cover healthcare facility stocks and managed care stocks at a financial services company. So basically, what I do is, is I understand the underlying fundamentals that drive these businesses, most specifically healthcare facilities, such as your hospitals, your surgical care centers, dialysis centers, and companies like this. So, that said, I don't represent any of my firm opinions, merely my own. And this analysis just represents that view. So, like, like Mayor Shear was saying, we need to really understand the potential benefits, as well as potential disadvantages, to building Benchmark Living. And so, as proposed, Benchmark Living provided their four hundred and fifteen thousand dollar estimate, in excess of that, to all local entities, meaning the town, the village, school district, most specifically relevant to us. And so when we think about the potential opportunity that will enable the town to build all the great things we know and love, and has made this town great, we need to assess whether that four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, whether that magnitude is, is correct. Because of course, Benchmark is, their purpose is to provide a very high number, and higher the number, the increased incentive it is for us to accept it. So that said, we need to, you know, better understand, where's the money coming from? What are the underlying fundamentals, so we can understand, are those assumptions the correct things that we should be thinking about? So, high level, what am I gonna do today? I'm going to show you what I think about their estimate, and how I derived it from two different methodologies, by the top-down and bottom-up analysis. Number two, I'm going to show you a, an item that I deduct off of my, off of my number, which is basically the opportunity cost of the foregone revenue attributable to building Benchmark, which I'll go through later. And then, the net impact is going to be, what is my estimate, minus what is this contra-revenue item? So like I said, I'm going to go through the revenue projection in two different ways, a top-down and a bottom-up perspective. And so when we think about a top-down perspective, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna use comparable senior living facilities. I mean, I'm gonna look at actual other locations where senior facility centers were built, and what did they estimate to revenue, what did they estimate to generate to revenue, and what did they actually generate? So the pros to that is obviously, these are real-world scenarios, so we can draw direct parallels to them. That said, they're also not direct to Pleasantville. So at the same time, while the underlying fundamentals might not be the exact same, the idea here is that through a broad subset, we can understand generally, what could we expect? On the flip side, I also take the opposite approach. If you don't agree with that methodology, I also say, okay, well, let's consider all the potential revenue opportunities. Now let's build up, piece by piece, how much would actually come? And I walk through my assumptions and where I got them from. That said, you know, it, there's also assumptions to that. So I, I help you through both assumptions. So this tax is kinda small, and for those with a presentation, feel free to go through them at your leisure. But basically, the idea here, it is twofold. Number one, I went through these six different facility centers across the United States, some of which are in New York, and I went through and saw, based on how large they are, all of which are considerably larger than Benchmark's senior living center, how much do they actually generate revenue, and what did they generate revenue through? And so we just go down the list, I'll keep it quick. The first one up here has a two-hundred unit count, but they only generated two hundred thousand dollars to the town. Next, one hundred units, and this company only generated one hundred and fifty thousand years in revenue. The third, a hundred, only fifty thousand in revenue. The fourth, one-twenty, they didn't provide a number. And then we go down the list, none of them are even close to a two-hundred handle number, all of which, these are larger. And so, you know, that, you know, that said, I absolutely agree to the point, these are not Pleasantville. Pleasantville might perhaps be a higher property tax revenue, which is why I also take the flip side as well. So, like I was saying before, if we were gonna go up and build up from the bottom up, what levers can they potentially pull to generate tax revenue for the town? And how do we sort of, you know, build this utility to everybody? And, and really, that comes in the forms of two main levers, property tax revenue and general sales tax revenue. Predominantly, property tax. So when we think about property tax, there are really two main drivers. Number one, how much is the property worth, meaning the value? Number two, the property tax rate. And so, in their estimates, Benchmark doesn't actually provide a value for their property, but they do provide us with an estimated property tax revenue number of four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. So if, if we assume that at most, they will pay a residential tax rate in Pleasantville, using, using our own Pleasantville tax filings, I calculate it to be three point eight percent, we can calculate the implied market value of their property. And based on that, that will be the minimum floor value of their property. So if we take the four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, divided by three point eight percent, you arrive at, call, eleven million dollars. So at the lowest, their property, their implied estimate, would be eleven million dollars, potentially more. That said, how do I sort of ascertain whether this is too high or too low? Because obviously, I'm here to show you that that is too high. Well, what I did was, I looked at the largest assisted living center company. In fact, many of them happen to be for public, so they have plenty of disclosure online for us to look at. When I look at the gross book value of a given property in that company, that average size, which I then extrapolate onto this facility based on the eighty-seven unit count, that is a book value, a gross book value of eight point two million dollars. And so this is the largest assisted living center in the United States, best-in-class provider. And based on an implied estimate here, at three point eight percent, at lowest, the implied market value for the Benchmark facility would be eleven million dollars. So already off the bat, we're coming to a really million-dollar gap. And like I've said, these are all projections. And, and as you correctly ascertain, there is both upside and downside to all of our estimates. And so, when I think about these two variables, and how do we sort of sensitize ourselves to these, the property tax, the property tax value, sorry, the property value could be higher or lower. And so when I sensitize it to it, I use my center focus as the gross book value of an average facility for this best-in-class operator, Emeritus. So if we use that, and assume that at most, Benchmark will pay the three point eight percent residential tax rate, we only get to a three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars a year in revenue to, to all local entities. So what I say is, based on that, if I assume a best-in-class book value at eight point two million dollars, and I assume an eighty basis point discount to the three point eight percent, so call it three percent, off the bat, you're already at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And so, that said, I am, I'm certainly no expert in, in public finance, and nor am I in tax law. So to the extent that you believe that differs, if you believe that that property tax rate should be lower, perhaps in line with some of the other comparables that I provided for you, in that, in that comparable, in that first methodology, this could be lower. And therefore, if one were to say, this should be at two percent, that would be in the hundred and fifty thousand dollar range instead. If you think this should be worth more than the largest assisted living center in the United States, perhaps it should be higher, perhaps it should be eleven million dollars. But this gives you context as far as what do you think will happen versus a best-in-class peer, and where do you think this company will sit relative? And so I get this, I got this question quite a bit when I was talking to people about this. And they asked me, how do I understand the difference between all the different local entities? And to that, I say, in my analysis, I'm agnostic to where the dollars go. To the town, to the village, to the school district. As far as I'm concerned, they will all do great things for the town. And so when we think about the potential benefits, I am agnostic to where the allocated dollars go. And I compare myself to Benchmark on this basis, local dollars to local dollars. Okay, and so, right off the bat, we're at a hundred thousand dollar gap. But what else is there? There's also general sales tax opportunity. So when we think about that, there's, you know, several potential drivers. How much money can the facility actually generate? How much are you spending? How much, how many people did you actually hire, and how much are they, you know, spending out of their own pocket? So when we think about the first lever, Benchmark provides a great deal of detail in some of these regards, which is great, because now I can, you know, take these numbers, engage them relative to some of the other for-profit centers out there. And so when you look at their estimate of nine point eight million dollars, that implies a hundred and twelve thousand dollars per unit at their center. So how does that compare to these best-in-class operators? The two largest assisted living centers in the United States. Well, it turns out, their number implies two and a half to three and a half times more revenue per unit than these centers. So, you know, it, it seems quite high that they would be outpacing some of their peers by such a large amount. And certainly draws into suspect some of the underlying assumptions driving their analysis. Number two, how much are they going to hire people? When we gauge their estimate of three point six million dollars, implying forty-two thousand dollars per unit, how does that stack up relative to, once again, their peers? It turns out, it's actually four times as much on labor, which is quite surprising. And once again, when we consider the main levers to drive local tax dollars to the town, labor is one of them. They're gonna hire more people, they say they're going to spend more, there will be more sales tax, and there becomes this multiplier effect to the economic benefits to the town. So, once again, a little suspect. The next, how many people are going, are they going to hire? Well, as it turns out, in one of their other submissions, they provide a Benchmark Living Average Facility Vehicle Trip Generation Analysis, where they show the average number of units and average employees at, in some sort of subset of their facilities. And it turns out, when you calculate that employee-to-unit ratio relative to what they're proposing here, it turns out actually that this facility has one point six times their subset average. So once again, showing that perhaps this center will generate more revenue, and perhaps they will hire more, perhaps they, you know, will hire more people. But the magnitude certainly draws into question some of their assumptions. And I mean, all of that said, how much actually even matriculates down to the local level? Like I said, I'm agnostic, allocation agnostic to where all the dollars go. So it turns out, the all-in general sales tax rate in Pleasantville of seven point, three point seven five percent, one percent of that gets split into this old allocation of the local, and zero point five percent gets split out to the new local. Within those, a subdivision then gets allocated out to the local entities, the local government and the school. And all in, of that seven point three seven five percent, actually only zero point six goes back to local government. And if you include the school, that's only zero point two percent. So, you know, that said, they speak a lot about the multiplier effect, and the potential to drive further activity above and beyond direct benefits is, is actually not that large. So a lot of it doesn't matriculate through. So all, all that being said, when we take it to aggregate, our top-down perspective and our bottom-up perspective, you know, we can do the math. It then becomes an exercise in going through and understanding, okay, well, if we assume they are in line, if we assume they are much more efficient than the best-in-class operator, if we assume they're worth much more than their best-in-class operator peer, we can sort of ascertain, what should the number come out to, to the local government, including the town, the village, and the school district? So, you know, going through that math, the property tax rate, I assumed that they have the gross book value per facility of ESC, the largest assisted living center in the United States. I assume an eighty basis point discount to, to the residential tax rate, which is still, still three percent, which is still quite high relative to where the comparables had been for those other locations that I had analyzed. And once again, that gets you to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And when we go through and, and figure out how much they are going to spend per unit, how much are they going to generate per unit? Just because that zero point eight two percent, the local portion of the sales tax rate is so low, very little actually comes into the local government's pocket. And so all, when all is said and done, I estimate, call it, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in tax revenue versus four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars at minimum that Benchmark proposes. And so what are sort of the key takeaways here? Even the larger, substantially larger, some of which were, you know, many tens of acres, you know, two hundred units, substantially larger facilities did not estimate, or even generate, you know, looking back, four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars a year in tax revenue. Number two, as it turns out, because you have such a large player in your town that generates, you know, a meaningful percentage of your tax revenue, at that point, they now hold a material amount of leverage in saying, okay, well, if we're going through tough times, perhaps we should negotiate, and you can lower our taxes. And as an incumbent player, they now hold that material leverage needed. And so you see that in the not-for-profit space with programs like the pilot program. Number three, my bottom-up analysis shows that, you know, clearly, we're divergent on something. You know, be it they're going to spend more, be it they're going to be worth a lot more, be it they're going to pay a much higher rate. And so on one of these variables, or, or most likely a combination of them, we have a divergent opinion. And so, you know, my, my point here is that, my estimate is, it's clearly not exact, I do not claim to be an expert. That said, just going through the math shows that there's clearly a divergent opinion somewhere, and drilling down to where that is, and deciding whether that's actually a fair and meaningful opinion, you know, is, is absolutely at the root of what we should be doing here. And number four, I was very generous, I would say, in some of my estimates, in that I assume that they would get similar metrics to some of the most largest and successful franchises in, in the coverage universe of the healthcare world. So to that, certainly, they could be lower. And to the extent that they are lower, that would lower my estimate even further. And, and, and as it is, I'm already at, call it, you know, forty to fifty percent of their number. And so, on top of that, what I also want to highlight is that, while my estimate is lower, I also want to deduct it even further because of what I call the opportunity cost of foregone revenue. Meaning, when housing prices go down in the surrounding areas, which I will, which I will get into later, that there will be not only a detriment to the Maple Hill residents, but there will also be a detriment to the town generally, because as that market value decreases, there will be less property tax dollars going to the town as a result of those valuations decreasing. And so, my methodology here was to use Zillow. Zillow first to establish our starting point, to understand how much value is encompassed in the Maple Hill resident area, which I have at ten point eight million dollars, according to Zillow. And so this is a very crucial point, and, and seems to be something that was definitely highlighted tonight. And that is using academia to try and ascertain how much, or how little, or perhaps how much it will increase property prices. And so, similar to Benchmark, the, you know, the academic sphere out there does not have that much for the niche subject of senior living facilities. And so as a proxy to that, I used a couple of different examples. I used group homes, I used affordable housing, I used freeways, and I used modular homes. To which you can say, some are fair and some are not. That said, it just gives you an idea. At the very least, it gives you context into look into how much it could go down. So here is the first one on group homes. I have a study here. I have a study here showing that the list price and the sales price for zones 1, 2 and 3, 3 being that farthest away from the group home, that the list price and the sales price had a statistically different differential between the initial and the final list price and sale price. And so, I love, like many people brought up, academia. For each one that you find on one side, you can find five on the other side, I'm sure. So I actually don't even draw that much into this. Let's go to the second one, affordable housing. I have four studies here showing, based on certain sample sets, 100 projects with 3,600 units, two developments, four sites, that there would be a negative impact and these areas span across Philadelphia, Minnesota, California, Virginia. Let's go to the third one, modular homes. So this was actually, not an academic study, but this was, I guess to just give you a range of different things that one could find out there in this public sphere, a survey based on realtors. And so they found that modular homes, the majority of realtors surveyed said that there would be a 0 to negative 10% change. And a certain subset, call it a little less than 20%, actually said that there would be greater than negative 10%. So, more context. And the fourth one here, this is a quote from a company in Tennessee, an appraisal company, they said, next to a freeway or railroad can see a 10 to 15% reduction in value. And so that's just to give you some sense of the magnitude. And so while I agree that it's unclear how much it will go down, I think, and more generally being, my purpose here is to show you that we need to understand the key variables that are driving a lot of these things. Because within their study, they say, okay, the University of Massachusetts provides you this output and it says 415,000, it's government condoned, this is a credible source, but we don't tell you any of the assumptions. At least here, I am telling you where am I getting my sources from and how am I gauging myself relative to each other? And so how does this all come together? Like I said, I use Zillow and I aggregate all the market prices within the area, which in total summed to $10.8 million. And I assume that on Maple Hill Road, there will be a negative 10% impact to housing prices and a negative 5% impact to the other surrounding areas. And to the extent that you agree, I obviously cannot argue against you. And so to that end, what I show on the right side is a sensitivity table. So if you think this will be more or less than that amount, absolutely feel free to do the math, look at the first table, look at the second table and see what adds up in your head. And you can actually do the math on it, because it's absolutely knowable. It's just a question of what do you think will happen? And so when I think about the net impact of all these things, like I said, I take the incremental tax revenue built out through property taxes as well as general sales tax at $247,000 versus their estimate of an excess of $415,000. A differential of more than $150,000 or 40%. Not only that, I also deduct a major line item that is not accounted for within their model, which is the opportunity cost of the forgone capital. The fact that property prices have gone down by some order of magnitude, to which you agree with or not, absolutely, look at the table and make your own decision. But by some order of magnitude, we need to measure this item. And so net of those two things, I get to a net impact of $211,000 versus, again, their estimate of in excess of 415, a differential of 50% or $200,000. And so, like I said before, I think my estimate is pretty generous in a lot of ways, in that I give them metrics and I give them credit for the largest, most successful two franchises in the United States versus living centers, which is certainly debatable. But anyway, number one, if we say that there will be a larger discount than the 80%, meaning they pay less than 3% property tax rate than what I've used, that would certainly be substantial downside to my estimate. Number two, if the property is worth less than a best-in-class operator to the best for-profit centers, the tax would also be significantly less. Number three, if they were lower than anticipated revenue and labor expense projections to which they had said, that would materially lower it. Number four, if there was a greater increase, sorry, a greater decrease in magnitude for the property values, that would also hold a substantial impact to my estimates. And so again, just I want to go over these, one last time before I stop. Number one, even larger, substantially larger facilities do not generate or even claim to generate $415,000 a year in tax revenue. Number two, incumbent facilities hold material negotiating leverage, and prior precedent has shown examples of this, in examples of the pilot program. Number three, bottom-up analysis draws into questions, at least some of the questions to which we diverge from Benchmark. And to the extent that we do diverge, where are we diverging and what is the reason behind it? Number four, like I've said many times, I believe that this is really a question of magnitude. And so to the degree that you agree or disagree with some of my assumptions, you can feel free to flex them as necessary. But at the very least, I believe that there's more downside than upside to my estimate. And last, we do need to account for the fact that there would potentially be an offsetting tax line item here in the fact that you now have lost revenue from forgone revenue from the property taxes in the surrounding area. And last, I want to show one last thing, which I think is really important. And that is, Healthcare REIT actually provides, in their public filings, how much they pay to operate a facility. So when you look at that amount, it's $570 million, which I source from the 2012 10K, of which they provided in their footnotes that they pay a certain amount to property taxes booked on their facility operating expense. But that number is not publicly provided in the SEC documents, but it can be found in an earnings call prior to that, which comes out to be 26%. So when you do that math, you say $570 million, times the 26%, how much will that actually come out in property tax paid? That is $150 million divided by the number of facilities that Healthcare REIT operates at 973, gets you to $152,000 in property tax paid per facility. So, this is just one more thing to put in your mosaic of thinking about how do we contextualize their $415,000 estimate? Healthcare REIT themselves, through prior precedent, has not paid nearly that amount. Comparables have not paid nearly that amount. And my bottom-up analysis shows that clearly we diverge somewhere on something. Okay? Thank you very much. And that's the end of my presentation.
So, could you stay there, Andrew?
Yeah.
So we can ask a couple of questions?
Absolutely.
Brief delay, switching tapes again.
Welcome back. We had a brief delay there to switch tapes. So Andrew, thank you for this. This is a major effort and I appreciate that. And we will certainly look at it with care, just as we will look at with care the submission about economic impact that we got from Benchmark. And you have that, I assume?
Of course, yes.
So I did have a couple of questions and some of this, I would say, would be maybe a comment that could fairly be applied to both your comments and those from Benchmark, which is, you know, it's a free country and you can say a few things in various ways.
Of course.
I'm not sure, and perhaps based on your expertise in the investment analysis world, how comparable in their economics, different classes of assisted living may be. For example, there are some assisted living facilities that are heavily populated by independent livers with relatively little support.
Absolutely.
If I understand Benchmark's comments to us in the past, their market niche and certainly the niche of this facility is a facility that serves residents who are needing quite a bit of support. And indeed, a piece of it is a memory care unit for people who need even more support than that. So that obviously affects the economics, affects the number of people you hire, affects the rental rates and the total income, and I assume also affects all of the metrics that you make reference to in the investment world.
Yes, I absolutely agree. And certainly when you draw an analogous situation, either in the investment world or in a situation like this, you have to understand those underlying metrics. So when we look at Ameritas and Brookdale Senior Living, not only, number one, are they a large player, so I believe they represent a large field of the industry, but on top of that, they also have different segments for those different things. And so they'll have one that is particularly high risk. They'll have some that are more community style and are low risk and they'll have other different segments that are broken out separately on their income statement. And so, I actually do account for that.
Have you chosen the comparable high-service component of that?
Yes.
Market leader as you?
Yes.
So you believe you're presenting an apples-to-apples comparison of the economics of operating a high level of assistance in a facility?
Yes.
So the other question I had, and perhaps you have a sense of this, is I'm not sure how meaningful, what's obviously meaningful to us is to dig back into the reliability of the tax revenue generation numbers that they have given us.
Yes.
I'm not sure the fact that whatever a nursing home in Corpus Christi, Texas pays a whole lot less in taxes is exactly headline news or even all that meaningful in the context of this analysis.
I absolutely agree. I think it's one part of creating the mosaic of saying, look, not that many places out there have claimed or have generated that much money to the town, or to the local entity, rather. And I think it just adds one more layer to thinking about how high could it go?
And you've done a great job here and I'm sure it'll be useful. That piece of it strikes me as utterly irrelevant. Am I wrong?
No, I mean, I think it just adds to the incremental view. And to the extent that you value it or don't value it.
So, the other question I had in your sort of final takeaways, and these are important issues for us as well, is, let's see if I can get back to your takeaways here. So substantially larger facilities did not generate or even estimate to generate 415K in year in tax revenue. So, I mean, what that, to tell me if I'm unfair in restating that, as the comparison group you chose, including many facilities in much lower taxed areas than this, did not pay this much in taxes?
Yeah, that's absolutely fair. By no means do I claim to say I did a statistically relevant analysis where I picked out errors.
And I won't bore all of us with the grim arcane details of the way commercial tax assessment is derived, because it's different from residential. But the other question that sort of popped up in my mind as you went through this is the question about an incumbent facility holding material negotiating leverage, by which you mean, at some point, they'll come back to us and say, hey, we're a big player in the town and things aren't going so well for us, you got to give us a payment in lieu of taxes deal, because you can't say no to the big guy. Is that kind of what you mean?
Not specifically that specific program, but I think broadly that clearly a larger player holds more leverage at the negotiating table.
Well, they don't, and I'm just exploring this, I think the only example of a payment in lieu of taxes that existed in Pleasantville in anybody's memory was the old MLA site, which came into being back in the 80s as part of an industrial development authority deal through the Mount Pleasant Industrial Development Authority. And they paid a fixed payment in lieu of taxes that was part of that IDA deal. I'm not aware, certainly in my tenure on the board now, 12 years, of there being any other circumstance where an individual taxpayer had negotiated a lower tax payment other than through the form of tax certioris. And I would say actually that the one example of an incumbent facility holding material negotiating leverage, as you describe it, would be Foxwood, because they are 259 units and have been successful in a series of tax certs that have driven down their tax contribution very substantially. But they have done that in the legally prescribed way through tax certioris. So in the event that any kind of a commercial entity came to us, they would have the rights anybody else has to challenge their assessment, but they would have to challenge it based on the property value method or the income method, as they're allowed to as a commercial entity. I can't see a scenario, and I just don't want those watching and those in the room to go away with a scenario that says, at some point, anybody, whatever, a car dealer, a store, a for-profit apartment building, whatever, gets built in Pleasantville and they come back and say, hey, guys, we don't feel like paying as much, cut us a deal. There's a very clear, and I will say from our standpoint, in some respects, highly annoying process, but nonetheless a legal process in New York State for how that's done. So, I guess my sense of that is, we'll dig into this and obviously Benchmark will dig into it incumbent as they might, but I'm not sure how relevant the comparisons are to elsewhere in the country, especially since, as I recently described, to an out-of-state insurance company, my house, as I thought I might switch my house insurance and my relatively modest house, in their view, couldn't possibly be worth what I said it was worth, just because I live in Westchester. Like, what, are you crazy? So, I just point that out to suggest that, interesting analysis and I'm not sure how the pieces fall out. So, anybody else?
You hit on the exact points I was going to.
Andrew, can you walk me through?
Sure.
I'm just trying to understand how, in their documents, they are talking about a $35 million project.
Yes.
So how do we go from a $35 million project to an $8 million book value?
Right. So that's actually one of the slides, slide 29, if you want to flip to that. And so I've gotten this question before too. Why is there such a large disparity between the investment cost and the property value? And so if I'm a corporation and I want to invest in a given fixed asset, why do I invest in it? Number one, I invest in it because I want that fixed asset. I literally want a building. Number two, I want to derive cash flows from that fixed asset, meaning to the extent that you now have that fixed structure, you can now generate cash flows on a present value basis within the future of those cash flows coming to you. And so you invest that $35 million, not just for the building, and therefore the building should not be worth $35 million. Rather, that should be the aggregate of both the building and the future cash flows of that business.
And are you, is your assumption, are you making some assumptions on their revenue projections then?
No, I don't make any. Well, I mean, I do within my tax bill. And what I do is I say that they have the average amount generated as the two best-in-class operators, ESC and Brookdale Living.
So, again, so the $9,770,000 revenue estimate that they provide?
Yes.
You discount by what magnitude?
Sure, let me flip back to that slide. So that is on slide, let's see, slide, where's this number? Slide 10. And so like you said, yes, they give a $9.7 million estimate, to which I ascribe a different metric. I say down to the revenue per unit, I take the average of Brookdale Senior Living and Ameritas.
So can I ask, are they comparable in terms of, are they providing similar services with similar environment in similar high-tax environments like this?
Well, I would say yes to everything, but the very last one. Because these are such large facilities, the largest ones in the United States, they have wide geographic footprints. So of course they're not going to be just located within a certain region, they have to be geographically dispersed.
So again, I don't know, but I assume that you pay a whole lot less for senior assisted living in Corpus Christi, Texas than you do here?
Sure, but, you know.
By an order of magnitude. Am I wrong?
If you were to compare the industry, a best-in-class leader within the industry who has showed best-in-class practice to drive, to become the largest facility in the United States, how do you compare Benchmark to that? I mean, I think that's certainly up to you, but in order of magnitude of, call it, three times the industry, seems quite larger magnitude.
So guys from Benchmark, he, according to this, it implies $112,000 per unit per year?
That's correct.
And I guess Andrew is discounting that.
I use the average of Brookdale and Ameritas.
So that is half that. What's been your operating experience with your other facilities? Are you getting anywhere near $112,000 or are you?
Let me just say, I mean, you're welcome to answer any questions you want to. But we've also thrown a whole lot of numbers around tonight and, you know, you don't...
So here's what we'd like to do, when you're done, when you're done with Andrew, we'd like to come on. I don't want to take that piece.
Okay, great. So, anybody other comments?
Well, I mean, for me, that's sort of the crux of the whole argument right there is, can that revenue item be defended or not defended?
Sure.
Because everything else flows from it.
Sure. I mean, what I would say to that is, when you look on page 13, the overall local revenue tax opportunity to the local entity, there's actually not that much generated through the general sales tax. The majority of it is generated through the book value of the building, right? And so I think that is the most critical variable to make sure you nail, the property, value and the rate.
Right. And I think that the focus of the board is, on these numbers is probably appropriately weighted in that direction as well.
Makes sense.
I think to what you said, there was some discussion about the comparison, will prices go up or down in those neighborhoods?
Sure, yep.
And just like I feel like a multi-unit family is a tough connection to assisted living.
Sure.
So too, I think, is a weak comparison to low-income housing or modular units. units. I think this is a tough comparison on either side. And I know that you're trying to come up with the numbers, but I think what Mr. Blaney, I think, said is right. You can really come up with anything to support your side.
Sure. I absolutely agree.
Yes.
I mean, in fact, we've had a lot of experience in this village with group homes.
Yeah.
And we've heard the argument that people have come forward with that their houses would lose value with group home, you know, were on their street. In fact, that has not happened in this. So you might find that nationally that is the case, but in this village, interestingly, that is not the case.
I think it'll always be a case-by-case basis, and certainly academia can argue for both sides. I think my main point here is that it is consideration.
In the real world, I mean, here, I mean, after all, that's what we're trying to do, is ascertain what's happening in this world.
Don't talk, you need to come on.
Answer the mic if you need to say something.
So we're trying to ascertain what's happening in this village, and I'm just pointing out that that's, at least that part of your report has not borne out.
And I was making the point on both sides. I think also that when Benchmark came up to say, you know, we're going to compare multi-unit families to that, that's a stretch as well. So I'm saying on either side, there's really a tough comparison.
I would not agree more.
So I would have taken one side over the other.
No doubt. Anybody else?
No.
I thank you, sir.
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Significant effort and much appreciated, and we'll dig into it. So would the Benchmark guys want to comment when Andrew disconnects there?
First of all, Mr. and Mrs. Tom, I want to congratulate you. You must be very proud. Your son is obviously very bright, very articulate. He speaks even faster than I do. So I'll give you credit for that, Andrew. But obviously, it's somewhat difficult when the neighbors, the opposition, get to come in at the last second and supply information, and we have to hit submission and filing deadlines, and so it is a little difficult for us to react.
And you don't have to respond now.
Understood.
Feel free. You're welcome to come back after having digested this.
And Mr. Mayor, I appreciate you saying that. So we're going to try to just address this very quickly, and then we may come back with some other information. In fact, I'll start with the second issue first in terms of the property value impact. Number one, I appreciate the fact that Mr. Tom acknowledged that he could not find, despite obviously a tremendous amount of time in research and analysis, a study specifically geared to assisted living, let alone even senior housing. And we spent a fair amount of time, and I do think that there is a crossover between multifamily and what we're talking about. But regardless, we're going to come back at the next meeting with an appraiser, an appraiser from Westchester County, who we have charged with the task of trying to do this kind of specific impact analysis, this property value impact analysis. We believe the MIT study is reliable. We believe the National Association of Home Builders analysis is reliable, but we're going to try to tie that issue together. Do I think it's dispositive? No, but I think it's a fair question for the community to ask in terms of what's the impact on my house value potentially going to be, and we're going to try to lend some more information to that dialogue. So we're going to come back to that issue at the next meeting. In terms of the fiscal impact that Mr. Tom really focused on, I'm going to take a giant step back and simplify this tremendously, I think. Our task at hand was trying to predict what we believe the fiscal impacts will be. It's an uncertainty, but it's an attempt to predict. If your village and the town tax assessor have a number that they believe is what this facility will be taxed, gather it. Put that information into the record. Mr. Stoller told the board that I just recently completed, my firm and I just completed the approvals on an assisted living facility, very much like this in size, in the town of Greenberg. It's a matter of public record. I gather that's, either he's stalking me or he checked that as a matter of public record. The fact of the matter is...
Google, have you heard of that?
Yes. One man's Google is a, all right. In any event, the fact of the matter is we were asked the same question on that application. We get asked that question on virtually every application. The answer there was, according to the town of Greenberg tax assessor, the projected tax implication, fiscal impact, tax implication of that facility was between $350,000 and $425,000. It's a matter of public record as well. Google it. So when Bill and his team hired, and again, I appreciate Mr. Tom indicating he's not an expert. We hired an expert from the University of Massachusetts, Donahue Institute, to do a projection for us. Go ask your tax assessor, study it locally. We went to an outside consultant. They came up with this analysis of 415. Now, interesting, in the 25, 30 minutes that he spoke, one thing that I was waiting for him to acknowledge, and he didn't, and I think it's very important, realize that our property tax estimate projection, property tax estimate projection is for the year 2017. That's, if you go back to my opening comments, I said, full build-out, full occupancy. That's what Donahue done. Donahue said, when you're fully at, when you're fully operational and the village and the town can fully assess, that's what your projection will be. So we're not looking at numbers from Corpus Christi or anywhere from last year or five years ago. We're actually projecting, we've got to get our approvals, we've got to complete construction, and we've got to go through what's called an absorption period. After the absorption period, we then go through the full assessment until we get to full assessment valuation. So again, that's a very important, simple fact that you need to acknowledge. Whether the numbers 250, 300, 350, 400,000, our point, our simple point, there's a fiscal net benefit as a result of this facility. We think our number's pretty accurate, and one of the things that we go through on every application, and I went through it with Mr. Draggett and Mr. Cook, when you put a number out there and you put it into the public record, there are a couple of key people who hear the number. One person is the tax assessor. So whether we like it or not, we've already put a number out there that's a number that the tax assessor begins to operate from. He'd love it if the tax number was a little bit lower. I'm sure the healthcare REIT might as well. The number is what the number is. So the fact that we spend an hour debating the projection troubles me a little because it is what it's going to be. You all have control over it. The second person that's important to hear that number are the legislators of the community. So we've put out our best guess at what it is.
I don't think it's entirely fair to say we have control over it there.
You may not have absolute control. One of the things that I'm going to have Mr. Cook speak to, we're not in a position, Trustee Cunningham, to answer tonight the full revenue that comes out of every unit. We'll try to come back with that. I mean, to some extent, I don't know whether that's invading the business province and proprietary information of my client, but if we can answer something that goes to fiscal impact, we certainly will try.
All right.
Book value, we definitely want to speak to book value. The pilot, I want to speak to the pilot payment. The best-in-class, you know, they believe they're the best in terms of what they provide, but using that vernacular may not be appropriate. And I know Mr. Cook wants to speak to size. This is one of those situations where the size may be a poor reflection of what's actually delivered. And again, and the mayor did it, but I think it's incumbent upon the applicant on the fly to say, it is absolutely wholly and grossly inaccurate to compare this property in this town, in this village, in this town, in this county, in this state, to something elsewhere in the nation. And to generalize with that broad brush does an injustice to the record that we've spent over a year trying to create before you. And then lastly, there's no modular home being built here. There's no affordable housing being built here. There's no freeway being built here, and there's no proposed group home. And I found some of those comments to be troubling at a minimum. But I want to let Mr. Cook address.
All right. But, I mean, just follow to, and to come, exchange with Andrew and Jonathan's comments. I mean, I do think that it's, you're the guys that gave us the number 9,77625 as total revenue for operations year three.
Correct.
And that does seem far higher than multiplying the units by the rents you have in the past described. So that's a piece we're not necessarily able to respond to tonight unless you care to, but that would be important to us. I say that because you will have potentially as a, as a commercial entity, the right to challenge your taxes based on an income method.
Clearly.
Yes.
Bill Cook, Benchmark Senior Living, and, well, I've been sitting here all night. I just kind of wanted to say something anyway.
[laughing]
Again, just to reiterate David's comments, I'd like to thank Mr. Tom. It's a very, very well researched and thought-out presentation. And actually, most of what I was going to say has actually been touched on either by yourself or David already. One thing, I guess, just in light of his, well, to Trustee Cunningham's question as far as validating that number, I personally can't do that right now on the fly. Again, we weren't, I wasn't, didn't come prepared with that. And well, frankly, I'm the lowly project manager, so I leave that to the accountants of the world. But that is a number we can, I can provide, and we will provide a backup for in the future.
Great, thank you.
I just can't do it tonight, and I want to make sure that's correct. And also, in determination of the actual estimate of our building evaluation, in addition to the UMass study that you saw, where that, the other number, we also employ a third-party tax consultant who we use for our other properties. They're actually based down in Virginia. That's essentially all they do is tax research. I guess obviously, you know, economics wasn't exciting enough. They had to do that. But that company is who determined our property value. So we use them for all our other properties, as you say, just to, in cases where we may want to, you know, we need to track what we pay as a good business for all of our properties. So that's the way we do that, so we stay current. And interestingly enough, I think Mr. Tom's evaluation was 11 million or so, apparently, was he came up with the final evaluated to make our numbers work. And our evaluation from our third-party consultant was $10.8 million is what we came up with, based again, as David said, on the 2017 number for a fully occupied, stabilized, completed community.
As the book value.
As a book value.
Okay.
And then we base that, you know, we took, took the actual tax rate in Pleasantville, I guess 3.8%. Why we're getting a discount, I don't know, and if you can tell me how to do that, I might look into it. And then we did take that into an increase on a per basis per year. Again, we're in 2014 to get to 2017 at a 3% a year increase, which seems reasonable, at least from the professionals. So that's how we arrived at the 400 and I think 17 or $12,000 number that we came up with. So that's a little background on that. And that's, again, as a, you know, as a non-accountant or economic person, that's as far as I'm willing to go tonight. And just a few overall points, mostly which, Mayor, you made very well, is I find it hard to, you know, compare a nursing home in Corpus Christi, Texas to an assisted living in Westchester County. Nursing homes, just in general, a whole different business model. My owner of my company has a saying, friends don't let friends build nursing homes. But that's, so that's a completely different business model. And actually, in the company profiles that Mr. Tom provided here, if you look, they do say that they are, Emeritus is including independent living, assisted living, specialized Alzheimer's, dementia, and to a lesser extent, skilled nursing care. And for Brookdale, they have six business segments: retirement centers, assisted living, continuing care, retirement centers, rental CCCRCs, entry fees, innovative senior care, and management services. So we are assisted living, and we currently own one CCRC that we purchased. Other than that, the other 46 properties are assisted living. So it's a, to try to draw the parallel between a companies that own nursing homes and various other areas. Kind of along those same lines, when he actually looks at the healthcare REIT information, which who is one of our largest investors, same can be said of them. They also own many nursing homes, many other different types of group homes and various other facilities that are not strictly assisted living. So yes, they do own 970, the numbers are correct, but you have to look at the numbers to see what they are. So I'm sure that, you know, that is what they paid for tax properties. That is what they paid for, you know, 973 facilities. Again, how what we would pay compares to, say, a nursing home in Texas or Mississippi or someplace like that is not exactly a direct correlation. So, and again, to make him the most quoted man of the night for Mr. Blaney, if you get several economists, everyone can come up with numbers to say what they want.
Pilots, do you have a pilot in any of your 477s?
Not to my knowledge. We don't have any pilot programs whatsoever. And then, lastly, again, just the last point where he does reference, he says the bigger buildings. And here, I see bigger seem to be a recurring statement. Bigger is better, bigger is better, bigger is better. I would counter that by saying, we don't build bigger. We build what we know to operate and to be profitable and a good business model. So I would, I would go out and say that an 87-unit building that is full is much more profitable and much better than a 200-building or a 200-unit building that's 150 people with 50 vacant units in it. So that's, that's why we don't build 200 units or, again, other ones. So I'd like to say that we put a lot of effort into our size of our buildings and how they run accordingly.
So we will, thank you, Bill. We will take a look at the information that we tried to deal with on the fly here from Mr. Tom. We will try to respond to the question from Trustee Cunningham as well, and we'll come back to you with that. If there's anything else that we think is relevant, we will certainly do that. And as I said, we do, we want to come back and see if we can close the loop on the property value issue as best as anyone can. In conclusion, we stand firm on the fact that this is a fiscal benefit for the community. That's not the only reason to do this. That's certainly a reason. It's also important for us to provide a wonderful and valuable service here in the community that I think our other report shows a strong demographic demand for. We've got nothing else. You've given us a lot of time and a lot of patience. The only thing that I would say, although I know we're going to come back and discuss some more information, I do think it would be appropriate for your board to begin to focus on the culmination of the secret process and to consult with Mr. Sacks and to consult with Ms. Favate. We think we're nearing the point where your board will need to make a determination of significance. I think it's important that you charge your consultants with beginning to do that so that we can take the information that's been submitted by the public, by your board, by the outside agencies, and by the applicant, synthesize that, and begin moving toward a determination of significance.
And I think we agree that we're at that point. So I think that, Lipton, you wanted to...
He has a problem.
Okay, so, and let me just say, welcome back, Andrew. I thank everybody on both sides for this because amid, amid the various challenges, we certainly are under the hood of this stuff in interesting ways. So if you can, are you adding something new or responding?
No, I'm just responding to one thing, and I got to clarify before I have to go home to the city, is that I accounted for three main things when I made my comparable comparisons. And that is, number one, I count for the fact that not all facilities are going to be fully owned and operated facilities. There are going to be some that are just management fees. So those are obviously going to generate much less revenue than the others. So I count for that, number one. Number two, I counted for the fact that not all these facilities are wholly owned by these companies. Some of them, it's just a minority interest, and therefore the economics of it are not going to be as favorable. Number three, I accounted for the differences between these large diversified businesses by going to the specific business line that was most relevant. And so if you just open up, you know, a financial statement for one of these companies, you're going to see that the revenue is, there's going to be a large disparity. That's because I went down to the specific segment that was comparable to the one here.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
How long do you, what?
How long is your presentation?
Roughly, how long you think?
Fifteen.
Okay. This is new material, not what you showed us the last time?
No material.
Okay. I'm just hoping you can do it quickly. It's not that I don't want to hear it. We've just been at this a long time and...
Yes, I understand. I understand. Okay, I'm just logging in, so, but I might take a few minutes.
You can call me, you can call me. Look, you don't, you don't have to stay for the religions. You have issues at home, go to it. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I have a few elements I want to talk. I'm going to have to stand at the mic again.
I'll bring the mic with you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm waiting for the system to come up. I can show you this. This, as you can see, is the driveway into the, lights please?
Yeah.
Into the Benchmark facility. The entrance here is a pretty nasty curve here, as you can see. All right? Now, these little yellow things down here are representations of various vehicles that are sized to, you know, it's a size. This is, what is it? This-
Do you want to put that, take the middle for now, before you do the projections? So, if you can see it better.
Okay.
That might be helpful.
This better?
Yeah.
All right. So, the way the driveway works is, from the street, it's flat to about this point here, and then it goes up five degrees. At this point, it's approximately 12 feet above ground, right? To get up to, this is 400, you've got to go up to 420, so eventually, this is going to go up to 420, this roadway. Now, as you can see, this curve here is pretty sharp. Normally, you wouldn't have a two-way road, and the reason why you wouldn't have it is, it's pretty dangerous. Now, here is a big box truck, which they're going to be using to supply the facility. Here it is, coming in, there's no way they can, there's no way they can come down the street, down the middle, and make this turn without going over there. Right? If they were to do it into the proper lane, they would have to go onto the left side here, which is posing the traffic, and go this way. Pretty dangerous, I would say. Now, up here, of course, is even more so. If you can have a situation where the, this is the exit, of course, here you go. Right? When you make this turn, your tail's going to stick out like that. Right? Here's a poor little Sienna coming in, he doesn't know it is coming out, and he's going to come up here, and, not good.
So, Lipton, I appreciate this effort, but the turning radiuses and the like are all pretty well established, as standard, national standards, and that-
Well, it may be-
Hold on, has gone into, I assume, their planning. That would obviously be vetted by the Planning Commission as a key part of their purview if this site plan were to go to that point. So I can assure you that the Pleasantville Planning Commission would not allow them to build something that did not allow access by the trucks they intend to use. Further, I assume, they wouldn't build it either, so-
Yes, that is true.
I'm just trying to move this along, because we need to focus on the issues that will affect our decision about the zoning.
Okay, that is very true. It is such an obvious error here, that they can't possibly want to do this, that this is really going to be a one-way, not a two-way. But what does that mean? That means they must-
Lipton, I mean, those trucks make 90-degree right-hand turns at corners all the time. This isn't a 90-degree turn, so I assume that-
No, not these, these items are in, are scaled, they're not bigger or smaller than what it should be. This is the scale. From here to here is 24 feet. The driveway from this point here, to the sharp curve here to here, is possibly 50 feet. It's like 55 feet on Maple Hill. It's almost the same, but the difference is, on a regular street, it sort of grows gradually in, and it stays at 450 feet, whereas here, it drops immediately to 24 feet. So there is no intention for them to build this as a two-way street. It can't be. They can't possibly do it. So, which, what does that mean? That means that they really intend to go back to Maple Hill, even though that was one of the big objections from the neighbors, that, get off Maple Hill, go on to 117. You can see, they can't possibly do it, but I think their intent is, back to Maple Hill. Maybe make this into an entrance, somehow use idle one of the-
Okay, I mean, I understand your argument about the geometry, and that can be vetted, and will be vetted, in the event that this goes further. There's nothing about their site plan that even gives them the option to come back to Maple Hill, as far as I can see, so. But, so, you're on the record as having that concern, and we certainly will check-
No, but actually, the planning board did say that they wanted the entrance solely on 117, but it is not in their specification.
Okay, so that's your assertion.
Now, I want to talk about-
Would you like us to turn off the lights?
Not that, hmm, where did it go? You can't see, oh, here it is, okay. Okay. As far as the white paper that he published, about the justification for zoning, doing the zoning, floating zone, and everything, that it's not spot zoning, he cites eight cases, basically. And all the eight cases basically say that it is not spot zoning, and it is legal. But as you know, every single case is based on particular facts. Now, what are the facts of these cases? What make them such that they are okay, as far as their zoning? Okay, so just take a look at, just take a look at them, and I'll give you some detail. First one I'm going to do is Stone versus Scopado. Now, in this situation, a company wanted to build an assisted living facility on this property. The people on the street here complained, of course, right? So what they did was, they said that it was spot, it was spot zoning. But what the village said that was, hey, look, look at this property, it's divided into four-lane highways here, and here, there's nothing here, and all the people complaining here, basically, is facing the other direction. So, that the village basically said, look, this facility really helps the community, and so they let it go through.
Lipton, I'm sorry to interrupt here, are you intending to go through each of these cases?
Yes, be fair.
So, can I say that, I'm the kind of guy that stays here till the last comment is made, but I think this, we've already given you well over an hour in your previous presentation, and this kind of an analysis is welcome, but it would be more appropriate to provide it to us in a written form, so that everybody can look at it, the applicant can look at it, our attorneys can look at it and judge it. I'm not sure that at 11:00 at night, we should spend another half an hour going through your analysis of each of these legal cases?
Well, okay, I'll just come to my conclusion.
Okay.
Okay, the conclusion is that, if you look at all these cases, I'll just go over the pictures quickly. Here's one, there's another one, this big area here, all right? This is the duck farm. This enormous area here, and by the way, this, I think, will show that why property value, like over here, would increase by putting in multiple family housing. In this case, it probably would go up. Yes, here's a property here, the village police station is here, the library is here, right? Not spot zoning. Okay, here's another property, there it is. Oh, I didn't do that one already. There you go, right? Does any of these property look like Maple Hill? Right? If it was Maple Hill, maybe the decision of the courts would be different. There were reasons why these cases came out, that it was in spot zoning, and it wasn't anything else that was bad. But in our case, it's entirely different, and I think the courts may come out with a different conclusion. Okay, that's it.
May I just ask Mr. Tom, are you going to follow up on the mayor's suggestion, and maybe have a written description as to why you believe that? I assume of these, the eight cases that were cited in the applicant's memorandum? And are you going to distinguish each of those cases in writing?
Yes, I can.
All right. All right, I thank you for that. Sorry to hurry you along, it's just, I think that's going to be a more efficient use of everybody's time, and maybe also a means by which the point you seek to arrive at will be best understood, so. All right. Did anyone else have anything to add to the story of Benchmark tonight?
All in my stead.
All right. So, now the exciting part begins, as we do our few resolutions. Feel free to flee. I thank you all on both sides of the table. Thanks to the applicant, thanks to the neighbors and residents, thank you, Andrew. More to come. Judy, for the record, Trustee Wagner needed to leave, and so we're now voting with a group of four.
Sorry, I'm just getting there.
All right, tell me when you're ready.
Aye. Good night.
Thank you.
Good night. Thank you. You ready for me?
Are you ready? Shane, can you, Austin, you all right? Can you get us? If you're going to avoid standing in the way of the camera, we'll just get our resolutions out of the way there.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Trustee, let's see, Resolution 230, Mindy.
Resolved that the pre-check register dated October 28, 2013, covering pre-check numbers 76630 through 76700 have been reviewed and are hereby approved. They include the General Fund, Water Fund, Capital Refuge Fund, the Pool Fund, Trust and Agency Fund, to total $361,647.70. So, did I say that right? $646.70, okay.
You got it. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, Jonathan.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the minutes held on October 14, 2000, or the meeting held on October 14, 2013, and hereby approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or corrections to the minutes?
Am I, can I, do I even vote on this thing? I wasn't there.
You can abstain if you want, but you certainly can.
Aye.
Aye, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
232, Brian.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the request from Holy Innocence Church to close the Tompkins Avenue parking lot on Tuesday, December 3, 2013, at 4:00 p.m. for a special event.
Is there a second?
Second.
Just an occasion to remind everybody that the parking lot in question here, on the corner of Tompkins Avenue and Manville Road, is actually owned by Holy Innocence Church, and they allow us to use it as a public lot through most of the week, with a few times reserved for church purposes, in exchange for our maintenance and plowing of the lot. It's an extraordinarily good benefit for the village of Pleasantville, and a generous gesture on the part of Holy Innocence. Every now and again, they have an event, and need to take, make use of that lot, this one being Tuesday, December 3, at 4:00 p.m. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Any further new business?
No.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all, we will be back next week, beginning with a joint session with the Pleasantville School Board.